Uh-oh, sorry.
Hi.
(Music)
(Music)
(Sniffing)
(Music)
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 (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music) (Music)
Seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good evening, everyone, and Rick and recommend, Rick. I'm happy to see everybody this evening. Welcome to the regular school board meeting of February 11th. It's now 5:20, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I think first on the agenda, we're going to have the approval. Wait, do I have to have the flag salute first, I believe? Where is that? We have the people that are doing that, just one second. It's right here. Rocco Rizzoli, would you please lead us in the flag salute? And Gunner Walmsley will lead us in the mission, and the community pledge will be read by Jason Maybaum. So, Rocco.
Does the order matter, or?
You're the flag, you go first.
You want to read it?
Sure. All right. The pledge, or the pledge of allegiance, or the pledge?
The pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you, Rocco. And now, we have Gunner to read the...
That's Gunner, actually. Oh. Is Rocco not here?
Rocco is...
Rocco.
Hey, Rocco.
Rocco, you take my side.
Rocco, you missed the flag. I'll ask you to do the mission and vision then, please.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't want to leave you out.
I just read the vision? Okay. Vision. Our students will realize their full potential to drive, to thrive with integrity in a complex and changing world.
Thank you. And Jason, if you'd be so kind as to do the community pledge. Thank you.
Here it is. All right. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to get a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like to move item number seven to the end of number 15. If that's possible, could I get a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, a second? Mention the two H's.
Oh, and moving item seven.
And, and does that have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, uh... Is there a report of closed session, Dr. Briggie?
Aye, thank you, President Marcus, there was no action in closed session this evening.
Okay, is there anybody pulling anything from the consent calendar?
I just wanted to...
Which one?
Thank you, G, in which case I make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item 8G.
Is the second to the motion?
I second.
Okay, thank you. Can I get an approval of all those in favor of the agenda, I mean, the consent calendar, without the item G, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the acceptance of the donations listed for Swanta Board Policy 3290. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, okay.
Okay.
I think you wanted to discuss that.
Yeah, thank you so much, I actually was reviewing the attachments, and I noticed the Joe Coy Foundation, and Joe Coy is my favorite comedian, so I was irked to review the rest, and I saw that most of the donations are for the athletic teams, and so I would just like to have a better understanding of what happens with these dollars after they are donated, and who's overseeing that, and welcome to our office, Dr. Hasty.
You're welcome.
Can you shed any light on the process, please?
Yes, so donations made, and what we would do then is put it in the ASB account, and assign it to that sport specifically, and then throughout the year, through the budget, they use it for the purposes of their sport.
Okay, and then, so that means, and then how are we verifying that the dollars were spent on the students and their athletic program?
Well, anytime we do purchase anything through ASB, remember, the ASB approves those purchases through that student body, and then therefore, that would be through a requisition process where we would either get an invoice, and we'd pay it accordingly.
So the students are doing the verification?
ASB would decide what they are going to pay for, and then again, the process to actually pay for it would go through our requisition and invoicing process.
So that means that ASB would be informed about the specifics, like, for example, I don't even have a basketball player, I send $5,000 because I'm pleased that my student has a great program, and then the basketball team says to ASB, hey, we'd like to use one-third of our funds on balls? Or on trips, on a trip, student trip?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So there is like an internal verification?
Yes, ASB has a governing body, and it's governed by statute, that they approve the budget and the purchases throughout the year.
And then, Remy, are you there in this process?
Yeah, it's all elected officials.
Okay, and in your mind, it's clear for you what, where the dollars are going?
Yeah, it's a whole budget, and we have like the budget charts, and the different POs, checks, and requests and everything, and then we'll approve them, and then I know it gets sent, and then there's more like approval to do further on.
To go through the best system, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for helping me understand.
Call for the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Brighi, that brings us to the stu-, I mean, Remy, that brings us to the student board report, I'm looking forward to it.
Just sharing my screen right now. Okay. So... Okay, well, to start off, we have the, our February events for ASB at Beverly is very packed. To start, we have a spirit week this week, where Monday was dressing up as pajama day, Tuesday was favorite artist day, tomorrow will be headphones day, and Thursday color wars day, I mean, yeah, colors day, and this is all because we're having a silent disco event at our school, and it's the first silent disco event we've had, where there'll be three DJ booths set up, and it's located on the STC patio, and there's three DJ booths set up, and the students can come, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and they'll all get their own headphones, and they can switch to different channels, to the different channel of each DJ, and it's a quiet party, so it's all in the headphones, I'm sure other people have seen how it's like, but it's a fun experience for all, and it was supposed to be this Friday, but due to weather change, the weather, and how it's going to be pouring rain on Thursday, and tomorrow, I believe, and possibly Friday, we decided to move it to next Friday, and we also had a pep rally this Thursday, or, yeah, this Thursday, and we're deciding to move to next Tuesday because of the weather as well. We have our color wars, which will take place on Wednesday, February 19th, in the swim gym, for the annual battle between the grade levels. Seniors wear red, juniors wear green, sophomores wear blue, and freshmen wear purple, and the grade that comes out on top at the end of the night will claim the color wars trophy. We have auditions for the talent show that has been, has started to begun, has began, and we have a staff for seniors basketball game coming up, coming up on Wednesday, February 26th. Black History Month is this month, as we all know, and throughout the month of February, our schools are emphasizing the African-American community and important African-American figures. Black History Month is a time to honor the achievements and contributions of African-American individuals who have shaped history and continue to inspire change. Once a week, on the BHHS Norman update, students are highlighting the impactful African-American individuals that have shaped our world. Last week, they spoke about Carter G. Woodson, the father of Black History Month, as well as Simone Biles, an Olympic-winning gymnast. And you can see our two students there on the Norman update, letting our, all, the whole students of Beverly High learn about these two figures, and every week in the month of February, they'll continue to do so. National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month is a vital opportunity to educate students about the importance of healthy relationships and recognizing the signs of abuse. An estimated one in 10 teens will experience dating violence, and approximately 10% of adolescents report being the victim of physical violence at the hands of an intimate partner. This is something our school is recognizing, one of the students, I believe, made this flyer as well, so something to show how our students are very impactful, and they really care about these causes, and put the effort to show it, and make it everyone aware of it. There is, BHHS is hosting a donation drive to support those affected by the recent LA fires, we're collecting the essential items like clothing, toiletries, canned foods, and more, to help families rebuild and recover. Bins are set up at different parts of the campus to put these items in, so they can be donated to those affected. We just had our BHHS open house, and it was a great night. We had all, people who were there were some students from robotics, the culinary team making food for everyone, that was delicious to have, and ASB students who were able to direct those students from BVMS, and parents to classes, they would like to see the different subjects they'd like to go to. It was a great experience for everyone, everyone enjoyed it, the teachers loved it, the students loved it, and of course, the parents loved it, and it was a great night, I feel, the food was delicious, the atmosphere was amazing, and I feel like everyone enjoyed it. We also had BHHS present at BVMS, so ASB, Cheer, Madrigals, and Theater, and many more different extracurriculars at our school were able to go to BVMS, and at an assembly, give a presentation of what their extracurricular is, and what they do, to get those interested to come and participate and join when they come to ninth grade at Beverly. We also had rewards for those who were selected to be on the principal's honors roll, and they received cookies, and it was a great time for everyone to just come and collect their cookie, and be proud of what they achieved to earn this reward. And here are just some photos of our chess club and the National Arts Society on our campus. At Horseman, we have students who are learning about the famous black leaders through their interactive bulletin board, and here are some photos, you can see, and some more over here. It looks like they, for a lot of time, it looks like a great board. We also had fifth, just like the ninth grade, Beverly students visited the middle school, we also had the middle school visit Horseman, and they just spoke about their extracurriculars, similar to how Beverly did, and to get those interested, fifth graders, to join their clubs and their activities on the BVMS campus. This is just some photo of a spirit day where they had a crazy sock day. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Anybody on the board who wanted to add a comment?
Sure. Wow, first of all, just unbelievably thorough presentation, I could have never done that in a million years.
Thank you.
There's so much to digest there, but the one question I had was on the dating violence section, does that, like, is it a pamphlet, or is it a course, like, is something that, are there speakers coming in?
I'm not sure if there are speakers, but they are putting flyers around our campus. I'm not, I think it's either our school or a club that's doing it, but I think it's a club, that they're just making everyone aware of it, and they may be bringing speakers in, most likely.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen so much about, you know, especially where like AI is playing a role in this, and, you know, so many horrible things, so I'm, you know, I just really applaud that one, as well as every single other thing that you showed, it was phenomenal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Remy, that was amazing presentation, as always, and I don't have any comments to make, I love to be updated, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Not much to say, but thank you very much, and I'm really glad that there's going to be some spirit days for, you know, building morale, and very excited about that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Remy, not much to say, other than I just wanted to invite my colleagues, you may not be getting the BVMS emails, but I am since I have a middle schooler, and tomorrow, Mr. Waters is holding also a Black History event at 11:40, and I'm planning to be there at 11:30 to attend, because it sounded really amazing, actually. Would you like to join me? I'll pick you up, okay?
I'll be there.
Good.
I think I mentioned that to you before, that I'd like to join you, but thank you for reminding me, and I, you know what I really like, that they took the KBF, every Monday, during Monday or Tuesday, I tune into KBF to see what two students are speaking and sharing the events of the week on the television, or on my computer, and I love the idea that this time, they're highlighting black, important black people in the community, and I thought that was really, and that they do it all week long? Or do they, once a month, or whatever?
So, once a week? Because our Norman update only airs once a week, every Monday, they're going to be filming it every Monday it'll come out, so, yeah, so once a week, yeah.
I love that idea, that's great, and again, when was the talent show?
It's going to be on March, I think, the 26th.
Okay, I just want to make sure I don't miss it this year, I know I've missed it in the past, and I don't want to miss it again, I hear it's terrific.
It's on March 24th at the Alrodeo Auditorium.
The 21st?
24th.
24th, okay, thank you.
I'm kind of jealous, I really would like to go to the silent disco, Remy.
I mean, you're welcome to come, take a look at it.
I can't pick you up, you can pick me up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Brighi?
Great report, we're aligned, we were at a lot of the same events, so I'll be quick, and I look forward to joining the board tomorrow at BVMS, who is doing some great things for Black History Month.
By the way, I would love to have gone, I do have to work at Glendale tomorrow, but anyway, I'm sure it'll be amazing.
I'll let you know.
Please.
Now, looking forward to it. So, just kind of taking off from where Remy was talking about, and as we've been talking about, attending BVMS tomorrow, we're excited about that. Each of our schools, in its own meaningful way, they're celebrating and recognizing Black History Month, whether it's through classroom discussions, student-led projects, guest speakers, school-wide initiatives, it's happening all over our school district, and we're very excited about that, and thank you very much for the board making time during the day to come to BVMS. Our focus is really ensuring that the celebrations are authentic, educational, impactful, they foster honest conversations and deeper understanding, and I know that that will be occurring tomorrow for sure. In addition to Black History Month, we take this moment to celebrate the achievements and contributions and efforts of our own students, staff, and our community. We are recognizing those who go above and beyond, I'm glad you pointed out our Norman news update, but there's a lot happening in our own school district and our own community, and we're very excited to be able to share that with everybody. As Remy mentioned as well, we've had a couple of successful nights, just welcome nights, at the high school, when we had a welcome night for our incoming ninth graders, I've never seen such a turnout before at a welcome night at the high school, and so that was really exciting, to be able to see that, as we were able to showcase what's happening in our classrooms, programs that are happening, from academic programmings to extracurricular activities and athletics, and just a huge thank you to our staff, and our students who are ambassadors, and showing people around, trying to get to classes, and find their way around a very large high school campus, and also, thank you to the administrators at BHHS for all of the work that it takes to put together such a successful night. Also, at our middle school as well, open house, again, another very successful night with our incoming sixth graders attending, and their first chance for many of our families to see what's happening at our middle school, from academics to extracurricular, and it was great to see so many staff, and so many parents and community members attend, I was able to see Mr. Stewart attending that event, and again, their best in show that the middle school has had lots of attention on it, and a lot of people observing, and very excited to be able to see the great things that are happening in our middle school. As you know, our middle school was just named as a school to watch, and it's evident in the open house that we had with all of the programs that are happening. We're fortunate to be part of a tri-city SELPA, so for our families with special needs, our school districts, along with Santa Monica, Malibu, and also Culver City, Mrs. Collins-Williams and I are the liaisons for BHUSD, and working with our SELPA, and being very involved, and so this is an evening for our parents and families to attend on Saturday, February 22nd, to get an idea of the types of services that are offered. It's also a really great opportunity for our parents to be meeting other parents, and there's a great networking opportunity that is often found on this Saturday, and this is a once-a-year event, so encourage as many people as possible to attend, it's just filled with a lot of information and support available for families. As you know, we have a lot of work that's happening in the district with our construction, it was great to see our board attend the groundbreaking ceremony earlier this afternoon at 1:00 for the new Kindheim building at the high school, and in that same area, just looking at our facilities overall, we're in a great place with, new facilities are coming online at our high school, and of course, at Alrodeo as well, but the bigger picture is not just construction and modernization, it's just about our overall facilities and the master planning that we have. We had some good feedback from our board on the survey being sent out, so that is now being available, it's on our website, as well as we send it out through Parent Square, so that we can get some input from our families on our facilities' master planning, and we will share those results at a future board meeting with all of you. The city of Beverly Hills, we had a meeting just last week, and I was joined with President Marcus and Vice President Manichari for the continuing conversation about an early childhood education center here at the Hawthorne Campus, and it's really exciting that the conversations that we had started over a year ago, working together to look at this particular site, and look at the options that are available to our community for our youngest learners, and for the families of our youngest learners, and give them an opportunity to meet one another, but then to start to look at what type of programming we can do here at the site as a community. I know that the city sent out a survey, and they're looking at everything from mommy-and-me classes to a community center, to different hosting of events, and we're excited to be able to continue those. able to continue those conversations with the city, along with their robust preschool program that they have, which is offered here and also at Horace Mann Elementary School. It's Kindness Week in the city of Beverly Hills, and so this is a nice partnership that we have with the city, celebrating Kindness Week, and there are events happening, not only in the city, but also in each of our schools, to not only celebrate, but to recognize Kindness Week. Just around campus, it's been a pretty busy year, and so it's kept me a little bit more out of the classroom than I like to, and more out of our schools than I would prefer. But I have some intentional goals on our classroom visits coming up, so I'm looking forward to being and spending a day in each of our schools over the next several weeks, so that I can then report back to you some of the great things that are happening. But it's also a great way for me to stay in connection with our students and what they're learning in their classrooms, along with our administration and all of our employees. So it's a really opportunity for accessibility, so that everybody from the front office to custodial staff to security, it gives me an opportunity to kind of do a quick check-in with everybody around campus. It is that time of year for our Elementary Science and Engineering Fair. This is a great event. It's going to be held for the first time here at our Hawthorne campus, and this is going to be an opportunity for, again, our youngest learners to impress you upon their science fair projects and the depth of their projects and the connection that they have to the curriculum that we have in our classroom. And a special thank you to the students that are involved, but also their families and their teachers that have also been a big part in helping and coaching them along the way. Not sure if you saw this on Instagram from the site, but just a quick shout-out to Mr. Waters. We are celebrating our 100 years of educational excellence at BVMS, and we have our first-ever Centennial Citizen Award. And if you did not get a chance to see that, really authentic video about recognizing a student, but also an opportunity for one of our administrators to be checking in with their students and truly providing them with the recognition and feedback that our students deserve, but it's a great video if you get a chance to see it. We've been talking about the fires and the wildfires, just about what's happening in our communities. We are working with Christie Bradbury, who is the wife of Bill Bradbury. Both were employees here, and so we have reached out to authors across the country in an effort to work with the elementary schools that were in areas that were burned by the fires. And so our goal is to replace the entire elementary school with library books. We've pulled the inventory of our libraries that have been damaged, and our community is very giving, and so we are reaching out not only to our parents, but also to the city, and we're sharing this information with other school districts as well, so that we can all pull together and work together, so that we can actually replace full libraries that have been damaged, and teachers are really in need of books in those schools. I hope that you like the college series that we've been pushing out. It's really a great series that we've been doing this year. This is just one example with Sophia Diamond and just her acceptance into Brown University. Our students just continue to be able to choose any school that they want to attend across the country, and I really like where we're going with this communication. I think that this is an exciting way to be able to share with our students and our teachers just where our students are going. And so this is new this year, and I just really like our communications department and the direction that they're going, so we can celebrate our individual students. And thank you, that is my report.
Thank you. Remy.
Everything looked great. I loved how you mentioned the centennial year and that student who was recognized for what he did, and it really shows like how our students are very outgoing, and they really want to help others, and they know not to put other people down. And overall, just a great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. Again, very impressive, in-depth look at how we're doing right now. I really want to give a shout-out to Mr. Waters, and not only thank you for your hospitality for when I came for the student event last week, but also congratulations to your new, I guess it's, is it an award for schools to watch?
Schools to Watch, mhm.
You know, just, I mean, absolutely fantastic. And also to Mr. Stewart over at Beverly Hills High School, thank you so much for the hospitality. And also, I know some of you are here, but I also wanted to give a shout-out to the KBEV kids, who also had given me a tour of KBEV, and just really wanted to applaud your passion for, you know, for your program. So, thank you guys so much, and impressive presentation, thank you.
Mrs. Sabaly.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Breggy. Great presentation. I love the idea about the library and how they're getting the books. So, is it parents or students, or what exactly are they doing to rebuild the?
Great question. So, we have taken the inventory lists of schools that have burned, and so there, it's, and we'll share this out again, the links are on Amazon, so that we're making it very easy for people to purchase, or there's even a gift card purchase where they can do the gift card, and then we will have somebody then use that gift card to go on and buy the actual books. And then we're working with Christie Bradbury to help organize that, and thank you to the PTAs as well. This is just hours that they're spending here, unboxing books, organizing, you know, categorizing them, putting them together, and then also then putting them by school, the couple of schools that we're working with. And, but there's, it's all through an Amazon link, so it's very easy, click, pay, and then.
So they're all like brand-new books?
All brand-new, yes.
Okay, that's amazing. Thank you.
Judy?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's good.
Dr. Stern, I'm so sorry.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Breggy. I also was very interested to hear about the book donations and the attempts to rebuild and re-gift books. So only, if people want to make donations, it really is encouraged to go through the Amazon link, right? Oh, excuse me, only new books are welcome, but if people buy new books and have them at their home, they can bring them? Is there a place they can bring them?
I mean, if people want to, we're trying to keep the books to the actual link, so that we can restore the entire library. But yes, I mean, if somebody has some books that are brand-new, that, you know, they can drop them off here at the Hawthorne Center, and we'll make sure that they get to the right place.
Okay, and can you send us the link as well? Or, I'm sure you probably have, but I'd love to see it again.
Yes, and we're actually going to be pushing it out again through the PTAs and the newsletters, but I'll make sure that you get it again.
Okay, thank you. Great report.
Thank you for your report. My only question is, which are the schools that?
I didn't, I didn't.
Is there Palisades School or is it Palisades-Pasadena?
There's one, I think there's one in each, so I think it's a Palisades School and then also one in Pasadena.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I'll send that to you.
Sounds great.
Well, I'm gonna take a little different note. I was very interested to see that we have a student that's going to be going to Brown University. I know that many people know that I am a very strong advocate for kids applying to the four-year schools out of the high school, and it's a big push that I give. And I'm hoping that instead of seeing one picture in the future, we may see two, three, or four students and where they're going to school, because I know now we've had two students, one is going to Yale, and now one is going to Brown, but I would really love to see a bigger picture, and I'm looking forward to that someday, because everybody knows how I feel about applying to four-year colleges.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on to the other business of the Board. I need a motion, or I'll make a motion for the acceptance and filing of a notice of completion for the.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, wait, wait, no, no, I got something else yet, wait, I'm sorry.
I was like, you can't bounce me twice.
No, I know, I know. I'm so sorry. We have Educational Services today, I'm sorry, Dustin.
No worries.
Please, Mr. Seaman, I'm open and ready.
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. Some of the information that we're going to cover over, hopefully, a very tight-presented presentation, may seem a little antiquated, but I think it's important for the community to understand what's happening in the Education Services Department currently. So I'm gonna go ahead and kind of launch in. You're possibly gonna leave tonight with still some questions about some of the programs and opportunities that we're offering through Ed Services, and I just want to remind both the Board of Education and the community themselves, that on February 24th, which is the next Board meeting, we'll be doing our strategic plan mid-year report, which will provide, 25th, February 25th, which will provide the community with some growth data, both on our I-Ready success and our NWEA growth data, so just to monitor the instructional practices that are happening in the classroom, plus any other wins or concerns that we may have instructionally across the district. So after tonight's presentation, if there is still some questions, I'm just kind of reminding you that we can also bring them back. The four principals will be in attendance with us. That being said, hopefully, what we'll be able to cover in the next, like I said, I will talk fast, course selection timeline, assessment timeline. We have some adoptions coming up, both in math from TK through eighth grade, our Ethnic Studies Program. I want to talk a little bit about our dyslexia screener that is coming in play in '25-'26, summer school, which was just released. There is some questions around blue-ribbon schools, which I think we can also introduce tonight and then further unpack during the strategic planning Board meeting. And then, last but not least, what we talked about was, we have a WASC visit coming up at the high school, but also celebration of these schools to watch. That being said, what's exciting is, Dr. Breggy and Remy both had mentioned, we have done site visits for our incoming sixth grade and our incoming ninth-grade students for the course selection process. Right here, you're gonna see a timeline. This takes everyone in the community all the way up until August of 2025, meaning the start of the next school year. So you see here what to expect in the course selection process. We've done our AP presentations at the high school, so every department at the high school did presentations around expectations, around our advanced placement programs. We've done incoming nights, both sixth grade and ninth grade incoming families. We've done, we've brought high school students down for visits. In addition, our school counselors are now meeting with individual students to go over that course selection, and as a reminder, we start 11th grade and work our way down to fifth grade. So we are still working through our 11th grade students, but for the Board to understand and the community, we will always make recommendations on staffing as well to the Board of Education around course selection process, and you'll see that we'll have those numbers for you by that March 11th Board meeting. Last but not least, course verifications in April, and one of the things that I want to remind the community is, in August, we launched it this past year based off some Board feedback. Dr. Stern and Ms. Manichieri were on our School Counseling Advisory Committee, where we created a Swapapalooza, where we allow students in August to be able to come to campus and be able to swap out courses if they choose to do so. So even though you're selecting, and I say this because we're selecting courses today, we still have time to change. I always want to remind every student, you're not locked in, you're locked in until the first day, right? And then we're locked in. So that's the course selection process, and I'm gonna kind of pause after each slide just because there's a lot of information. So is there any questions around the course selection process?
I ask that this be done so that we can keep our questions current and not have to think about them at the end. So if you have any questions on this particular topic, feel free to ask them about Mr. Seaman now. Thank you.
Well, this is similar to course selection, but I know, because with course selection and setting up the whole master schedule for each student, will the schedule, how this year, at least for the high school, is it gonna be the same next year with sixth period being a sport?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, so everyone knows. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Stewart.
I have, is it just on the course selection, or can I? Okay, then no question.
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Seaman. I just wanted to touch on the Swapapalooza that you mentioned. It's something that is, last year was the first year, and so I would encourage you to, I saw Mr. Stewart send it out in one email already, but his emails touch on a variety of things. I just would encourage you to let families know, as an example, the week before school starts, Monday is freshman orientation, followed by Swapapalooza, you know? Tuesday is 10th grade book distribution, followed by their opportunity to swap Wednesday, and so on through the course of the week. I don't know from a branding perspective if you guys want to start calling this Norman Nation Week or something like that, but as we are focusing more on the academic achievement and making sure that 1,200 kids are course-selected and have their tushes in their seats on the first day of school, I do think that we need to hype it up and inform the community a little bit that this is the plan going forward, and then we, we no longer will be having two to three weeks' worth of lines for our students to make those changes. And so I just want to, this is what it is, please plan your travels accordingly, and please expect to be back on these days. I only, I only say it because then I know that you guys are having to deal with students begging, I'm sorry, I didn't know, and I feel sorry for the students too, so let's just get the word out. You could call it whatever you'd like to call it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good idea. I have no questions or comments.
Okay, next thing, I just want to draw attention. If you look at the BVMS website and the BHHS website, we did have a refresh of the Pathways to Success booklet. For those out here, you can pick one up on the way out. It, we were able to go ahead and break up even the pathways a little bit further, so you'll see some changes within the pathways. I always make a recommendation to anyone in the community, if they're in the course selection process, for sure, look at your Pathways to Success booklet. It'll help guide you, starting elementary. A lot of our families don't understand that the specialist courses that we offer our TK through fifth-grade students, all those classes feed into every single pathway into 12th grade. So those courses, even at the elementary level, were selected and created by design to make sure that it is a free flow of information all the way to 12th grade. I'm gonna jump into our assessment timeline, because again, I think communication and early for preparation is key. We are already in the assessment season, so second semester of the school year, Education Services Team with Site-Based Administration, school counselors, and a lot of the teachers are involved in multiple assessments. It is important that our students that are learning English, our EL students in the community, we start our summative assessment process, where we're able to potentially graduate them from our EL programs. And so these assessments are very important, so it's a one-on-one assessment that our school counselors, our ELCs, and our Site-Based Administration help deliver. But I will also bring those names of the students that graduate from our EL program to the Board over the summer as a celebration. We also have our upcoming SAT day, so all the juniors sitting behind me, and also the sophomores for the PSAT 10. For those that don't know, in the community, we run the SAT suite. We're one of the few school districts in the state that provide a free assessment to all of our students, so it gives them an opportunity for a free college assessment, and that is in March. The next piece for the elementary families that are listening, OLSAT, OLSAT. Why is that important? In third grade during second semester, we assess all third-grade students to be placed into the Gifted and Talented Program, which is called the GATE Program. And so we assess all third-grade students. If a student scores a 125 or higher on the assessment, they are deemed gifted and talented. It's a critical thinking exam, whereas students that score a 121 to a 124 have the opportunity to retest, and they then will get the opportunity to retest in the fall of their fourth-grade year. So there's two opportunities for students to qualify based off of the OLSAT exam. Last but not least, or not, the two last but not least, CASP exam, I know that I- Last but not least, or not, the two last but not least, CASP exam. I know that high school administration just went in and spoke with ASB. We're looking at ways, and we always encourage all the parents in the community, how do we get our students excited and geared up and ready to prove what they know on the CASP exam? So that's starting in April, but I appreciate you guys partnering with us. And then our AP assessments wrap up in May. And so it's two weeks long. We, you'll see the strategic plan that we have increased the number of students taking AP assessments and increased the number of tests being taken. So more kids are taking multiple AP tests. Yep, yep.
Somebody has a question? No question?
Thank you, Dr. Seaman. What are the percentage of kids that are, that are coming in at that higher level, in that 125 or above?
So I could only speak on, say, like, the 4th grade class right now. So 4th and 5th grade, we have 111 GATE identified students between the two campuses. Yeah.
Oh, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that means, for example?
There's about a little under 50 students per grade, per campus.
Yeah.
And some, some a little higher.
So that's like 25%?
Yes.
25%?
That's significant.
Yeah.
That's very significant.
But, but in some, well, and we utilize the OLSAT. And some are a holistic review process. So some have done outside assessments, or also we do a review of grades. And some have qualified not just based off the OLSAT, meaning they could be gifted and talented in other areas, such as fine arts or other arenas.
So I've given the OLSAT quite a bit. And I know one thing that I think people should know, well, first of all, I'm glad that you use alternative measures, like such as, you know, fine arts, because there are absolutely different types of gifted. But if you think about 125, which is your cutoff, and different districts have different cutoffs. But 125 is, is a pretty rare score, if you think about it. That's like the 85th or 90th percentile, which, what does that mean? That means that if you score 125, then you scored better than, you scored as well as or better than 90% of other same-age test takers. So it's pretty rare. It's not that you got 90% of the tests correct. It means that in terms of all the kids who took the test, you did better than 90%. So it is just one metric, but it is still pretty rare, because that means only, say, 10% scored higher than you did. I think that one thing I've seen in the, in districts is that sometimes parents will get upset when they say, hey, you know, my kid scored 100, which by the way is average. 100, most kids score between 100 and 115, most kids. So, but you'll get parents who say, well, you know, I know my, my child's gifted. I mean, yes, so they scored 100, but, but they really are gifted. And then, and they say, and I don't want them to miss out on a, an enriching class where they offer them all sorts of things. So, and I have mixed feelings about that, because I do think that sometimes there are kids who are great kids, but they're average in terms of what this measures, and so GATE may not be for them. But I wanted you to speak to the fact that that, that I would imagine you do get some pushback on that. And what do you think about that?
Pushback is using a light term, browby or, no, we, we do, I think utilizing the OLSAT as our first opportunity to screen children gives us that leverage of the data to utilize in the conversations. And then when families are wondering whether or not their student truly is gifted, that's when that one-on-one conversation needs to be in play of looking at longitudinal data. And we do go back to looking at performances all the way back to kindergarten, especially with the 3rd grade families. But like you're stating, scoring 100 is fantastic. I mean, that is, that's the goal ultimately of our educational institution, is the majority of our kids would score 100, right?
115.
And what we really utilize this assessment for is to be able to identify the students. As much as we provide intervention for our students that may struggle academically, we also need to excel the students that are gifted and not getting bored. And this helps us figure that out.
Right. And then just programmatically, I really hope that for those identified kids, that it is more than just, say, a Wednesday morning of ceramics or something like that, because there has to be an ongoing, consistent exposure to things that really grip some of those kids. Because you're right, I mean, just as the federal law requires us to help those who are struggling or those who are in special ed, we also have a responsibility to those who are, you know, scoring very high as outliers. And there's a lot of kids who, you know, who could be left out. So thank you for that. I also, can I bring up something about the dyslexia?
Yep.
Okay.
It's, it's coming up.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll wait.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's okay.
I apologize.
I just wanted to ask really quickly, regarding the SATs, are we implementing a way for the students to practice before they take the SATs?
Yep. And actually, this weekend, for the juniors that are in here and are listening at home, we have the Practice SAT this weekend. So our college counselor at the high school sets up practice assessments for our kids prior to. We also run a boot camp during the summer, where it's a two-week boot camp hosted by our staff. We have a math teacher and English teacher, our college counselor again, work collaboratively on being able to provide not only college writing opportunities, but practice assessments for the SAT. And then we do things inside the classroom as well, in preparation for the SAT.
It's more voluntary, not mandatory?
No, the SAT School Day is mandatory. Some of the practice assessments along the way, they're hosted on the weekends and stuff, so they are voluntary. But we do cover topics inside the classroom in both math and ELA. Our math teachers and our English teachers in 11th grade help start preparing the kids for the SAT.
Okay. How long do, are they going to be preparing them? Is it like a few days or how is it going to be implemented?
Throughout the whole school year. So it's, we, kind of like a drip campaign, so it's a little bit along the way. We always look at different questions from retired SAT assessments that they'll utilize as an opener in their math lesson, or they'll use it as a writing prompt in their English class.
And is this new, or you've always done this? I think it's, now we're starting to implement it?
Our administration launched the SAT School Day in 2019. So this is our sixth year doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just, to bring up the SAT, I know how it's become progressive now as you take it, like the first module, depends how well you do on that, then the second module will be either harder or easier. So are all the practice SATs that the students will get, are they all online, but is similar to how the actual SAT will be progressive?
Yes. We, we try to mimic, same thing with CASP and same thing with AP down the road, is because everything's going digital, all of our assessments, CASP is assessed digital, SAT and ACT are both digital as well. We do try to mimic that as much as possible.
Okay, thank you.
For the practice sessions.
Thank you. And-
So like this weekend, it will be all digital.
And Ms. Bog, also, for our classes, like the different English classes, we also get vocabulary books that are from the SAT. So we learn the different SAT vocabulary words. Even though there's not a vocab section anymore, it's still useful for like decoding, like in a passage to understand a word that you're going to, basically, to get the question correct.
Yeah, I'm just worried because I'd like it to step up so we can get our scores higher, because we haven't been testing very well. So if we implement more practicing, the students will be prepared.
So I'm, at SAT, we, we score through the roof.
Oh, okay.
So you see that, it's CASP assessments that we struggle, that's why we're working with ASB, because we know that our SAT scores are through the roof, and yet our CASP scores don't match the performance that our students put forth on the SAT. And so you'll see that there isn't a direct comparison. We look like two different high schools.
Why do you think that is?
Why do you think this is?
I think it's just that, because students who are taking the SAT know it's going for their college, they're going to be submitting it, and it's going to show why they're a great student. But they don't know that the CASP, CASP scores for our schools, showing our schools, that like, we're not, it's not a great inflation school that every teacher gives out an A's, it's actually harder.
A motivation for them to-
Yeah, exactly. And-
Take it seriously. I think I've heard that before.
Yeah, I presented before you came to the board about, and we spoke to Mr. Stewart, or Ms., yeah, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Cabelas, and Mr. Chang about giving the option that if you score at least a three, that you'll be able to leave campus during lunch, because a lot of students have been-
I'm not going to let you do that. I'm sorry. There are some kids who just won't, cannot score well. I mean, even if they don't have learning differences, they're just not going to be able to. So I, but there are, there are some motivational things.
We'll think of something.
Different motivations.
Maybe you can help us with that.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, couple of different questions, Dr. Seaman. Regarding the SAT being on this, is it on the summer school schedule? The SAT prep that you mentioned for the summer?
No, that hasn't been released yet.
But it will be.
Yep. It's a separate that goes only to our current 11th and our 10th grade students.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't see it on the flyer this week. Got it. And then, in regard to CASP, I saw that for middle school honors placement, that CASP is now part of the formula.
Yep. It, it has always been part of the formula.
To continue?
That, that is part of our conversation this year, is to maintain placement, you must maintain what placed you into it.
Yeah.
Correct.
I hear you, and I don't have a problem with objective standards and reaching for better. Just what would you say to students who maybe feel that they're not getting Level 4 teaching? Number one. And number two, can we start to normalize sending CASP prep packages, pamphlets home, so that the students can start to work on them? You know, I, I know that there is a big push for the teacher to be completely in charge of the education. And in theory, I think that is the best kind of inspiration a teacher can have, is to be exclusively responsible. But different students learn in different ways and from different people. And so I, I just think that if that's going to be the requirement, then I would hate for some students to feel like they're handcuffed and blocked out of the system. So in other words, how are we really giving our students equitable access when some students are getting more rigor than others?
Great question. So there's two checkpoints, and that will play into our strategic plan conversation next week, or not next week, in two weeks. One, both math and English did IABs, the interim assessment blocks, which is the mini version of a CASP exam, both in the spring and they're doing, in the fall, and they're doing it again in the spring prior to. One, it's for practice, so they get to actually see a mini version of the CASP exam. But it also gives us data on exactly who's doing what where.
Yeah.
And how are the kids performing and where are we making progress? In addition, from a growth standpoint, and something that we have to unpack a little bit further, I think with you guys, is showing the growth is sometimes maybe, and I, I, kind of Dr. Stern may agree with me on this one, is sometimes when we get some feedback from students that maybe say, I could potentially be bored. But then we do show significant growth within their performance, understanding what the standards are for that grade level. There's a whole lot that goes into that conversation.
Yeah.
And so I think being able to look at class by class, teacher by teacher, grade by grade, student by student, NWEA data, in addition to the IAB data, really gives us a picture of, is this significantly going to impact our honors program? You know, like, are we going to all of a sudden lose 60 kids? Or are we maintaining, or are we actually growing the honors program?
But what, but the growth is not as important to me when there's a bottom-line perspective. You know what I mean? Growth is not going to be comforting to that student who feels like they're getting gypped in the quality of education that they're getting. And so I, I hate to say it, but that is the fact, is that some of our students, for example, are not getting a great math education, and they haven't been for one or two years. And so my heart breaks for them. I had six of them in my car on Saturday night, boys and girls, and they had it down. They knew who was getting a Level 4 education and who was not. And those that were not were really deflated. And so I think that I really would like to level the playing field, please.
I agree.
Thank you. So that's CASP. In regard to the AP exams, we touched on this with the prior board. Some of the teachers seem to be requiring AP exams now as part of their coursework. Is this a board policy that you would like us to consider? Where we are requiring all AP students to take the AP exam, and that it would be, it would be considered the final exam? What are, you know, we had a whole study session about our achievement, and this is one of the things that I felt like we left open-ended.
Yep. And I think, not to kick that, I think it's a great thing for us to beat around on February 25th. And the reason I say that is because I appreciate the Board of Education, for those that don't know in the community, again, we are one of the few school districts, the only one I know, and I, I know people from across the United States, that purchase all AP exams for our students. So removes all obstacles, because regardless of anybody's exterior perspective of Beverly Hills, we still have students that need support financially, and especially when taking multiple AP exams, when they're very expensive. And so I appreciate the Board of Education for being able to provide that funding for us in Education Services, to be able to provide the AP exams for all kids. So we register every student. I think it would be a great conversation to further flesh out, what does that mean by creating policy to ensure they all sit for the exam?
Yes.
And we have that data from last year of how many we registered to how many we sat. I just don't have it on me right now to use that for the conversation. And it would be good for us to look at the data and the necessity. The hard piece is there is ed code, though, that we cannot require teachers to assess in a certain manner.
Okay.
Meaning we can't tell them how to-
How to run their course.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we can make the recommendation. And most have adopted that concept based off you guys purchasing the assessment for them.
Okay.
But I think it's a great conversation for us to have.
Let us know.
Especially with Drew and Shannon will be here as well.
Yes. I mean, it's been a really good evolution.
Yeah. It's nice.
Thank you again for that part of the presentation, Mr. Seaman. I just have one quick question to alert people. That's something that I saw either today or yesterday on the NWEA and the iReady exams, that they are now being used as tools to help assess whether students should be in honors going forward based on their scores at the last quarter. And I think that, I think parents should be made aware of that, that in addition to helping us, it also helps the teachers know who's ready for honors classes. So I just wanted to make that comment, and thank you for your, that part of the presentation.
Yeah, and I think it's important too, because going back to what Dr. Stern had mentioned about OLSAT and other entry points into honors programs, iReady and NWA, NWEA is a great way through the diagnostic for students to demonstrate, they may not have performed great on the CASP, but they can come around the corner in the iReady and/or feedback from their teacher and stuff. So, so there's multiple measures for that. I'm going to keep talking quick. The next slide, real quick, is the math adoption. So I do appreciate, President Marcus was part of this group with me. We had parents from the community also participate. So we are running two math adoptions, one at the elementary and one at the middle. What does that mean? We started in, it kind of goes here, we started all the way back in the school year of 2223. We created a math leadership team at both locations, both Horstmann and Elrodeo, at the time it was Hawthorne. We brought them together. We ensured that we were training all staff into cognitively guided instruction within math. From there in 2324, we started to ensure all teachers were trained. Then we were noticed in October of '24 that our math curriculum in the district was discontinued by the publisher, which then allowed us to go into our search. We started evaluating vendors. And what's really great now is all of our teachers are trained in portions of the piloted curriculum around our essential standards, and will start being, teaching from those new textbooks and curriculum. And so your students will see some of that. And then we will bring a recommendation to the board at the end based off of student feedback. Now usability, what does it feel like to use the new curriculum? The teachers implementing it. And then also parents' feedback, as they're going to see that new curriculum being filtered home. And that's also happening at the middle school as well. So we'll be bringing those to you. The next one we have is our Ethnic Studies. One of the things around here I think is important is we started this conversation again back in 2223. And initially, we were going to have this conversation where we are going to be able to take some of the framework components and look at potentially our 9th grade English class, looking at some of the research projects. We were also looking at our US History course and looking at some of the standards. Within both of those courses, the standards, there's not enough space or room for us to be able to move some of the framework into either of those courses. The great part is- The great part is, though, we've worked really diligently with our social studies department around identifying the need for, regardless of any new adoption, a semesterized elective courses. We only have two semester courses that are elective right now. We have health and personal finance. And so I know that we have some students that we know that they're in a year-long elective, and they may not like it anymore, or they may be struggling in it, and they don't have an alternative to go somewhere else. You hear a lot of that now is, the kid's second semester doesn't like their year-long course. They want to find a different course. Well, we don't have a lot of semesterized courses. So this lent itself perfectly for a semesterized course. In there, you'll see in the highlighted portion, the framework determines that African-American history, Asian-American history, Latinx, and Native American are four groups that we will cover. And then we were able to, the LEA can determine what other groups we would like to be able to include in our ethnic studies course. We have included Jewish-American as well. You'll see that here are essential questions that we will tackle throughout the course. But what we are still in the process of doing is we do not have an adopted curriculum. We are still not there. We are still in the conversation with our social studies department, meaning on Wednesday, we're actually meeting with them again in a pull-out day. Myself, Ms. Cabales, Mr. Stewart, Dr. Sherman, and our social studies teachers. I'm still trying to flesh out, it's a 954-page framework of what is it, what is it at the core? And then what are we going to bring to you as a recommendation in a study session? So right now, there really isn't anything other than, I don't have a textbook that we're bringing to you for consideration. We are still trying to flesh out a scope and sequence. What does that mean? From day one, what would the kid learn? To the day, you know, to the 18th week, what would this student cover? And then what's the ultimate outcome? We're really focused on project-based learning. So we're looking at different ways of getting kids engaged in public speaking. And so that's really where we're at currently. So we'll probably, hopefully, be able to work with President Marcus on setting up a date probably closer to the middle of March, where we'll be able to have a potential study session, where we can present then our scope and sequence, what would the units look like? What are our essential questions within each of those units? And what are our potential resources that we're utilizing? We're finding a lot of open educational resources. Not a lot of textbooks are out there that we like personally. And so the great part about the framework is it does give us, as an LEA, the opportunity to make this ours. And so that's what we will be able to bring to you, hopefully, in March. So I'll pause there for a second.
So ethnic studies would be a semester-based, just one semester?
Yes, we would be able to offer similar to what we do with the health and personal finance as a summer opportunity. We're not offering in the summer because we're just not ready. And then we could partner with health and ethnic studies, or ethnic studies and personal finance.
Okay, so like in the school year, it'd be, yeah, that's how you would partner. And then it'd also serve as another course that if someone were to drop a full-year elective, they can take this as their second semester?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. And we also hope to not just, with ethnic studies, also bring other recommendations around semesterized courses for that flexibility in student scheduling. We see that the year-long courses are really holding kids in some places where they sometimes become a discipline issue because they don't like the second semester. I'm sure you have friends in that.
Because there are so many variables still yet to come, I will reserve my questions until then.
I have tons and tons of questions. First of all, the ethnic studies is, who brought that? That we have no curriculum of the ethnic studies right now, you said, right?
We have no curriculum.
Okay, and why are we discussing it?
The board asked me for an update of where we're at in the process.
Okay, so we're nowhere in the process right now?
No, we are in the process. I just stated that us, social studies, so we started this two years ago. We were initially going to look at incorporating it into English 9 class. The framework and the standards don't mesh well. So then we looked at U.S. History, and we tried to vet that out. So we spent a lot of time working on the framework and working on standards to place it.
So can I ask you, why are we spending a lot of time working on it?
Because it has to be implemented by '25, '26 for the graduating class of 2029, 2029-30.
So that was back then. Things are changing constantly. And we're not having any funding for it. We're not forced or mandated to include it. Not yet, right? There's no funding.
There is no funding, but we are also not told that we wouldn't be audited for it. And so all we know is the auditing measures. The auditing measures would be, we need to approve a syllabus, and we also have to have student outcome, meaning evidence of learning. So that's why we're talking like project-based. Are we doing speeches, presentations, those types of things?
So there's no requirement as of now. And the ethnic studies is basically DEI, critical race theory, it's all the same. We just added, we added. Okay, so the ethnic studies, basically, tell me the difference between ethnic studies and DEI and critical race theory.
So Gali, there'll be a study session, and we can address that question at a later time.
Okay, sounds good.
Excuse me, we cannot have conversation from the, I'm sorry.
Legally, we're not allowed to have conversation. But let me just say, what I would like to do is I would like, I would like the parents to be involved in the ethnic studies program. I would like the community to be involved. I would like everybody to see what the program entails, and I would like us to know what it is involved. Because right now, it's ethnic studies because we have changed it, right? We've added stuff. The governor has said it needs to be in a curriculum, and now we're not getting funded. We don't know yet, so nothing has happened yet.
And parents will be involved in the process. So each PAC will be able to select two representatives. But we also, similar to our math adoption, and let me back that up a little bit, is we already have posted both piloted math adoption curriculums on each website at BVMS, El Rodeo, Horseman, similar to our ethnic studies, scope and sequence, and potential curriculum adoption. We will post that on the high schools' website well in advance for any community feedback or any questions that parents have as well. So by public viewing, we only have to do 10 days for an adoption legally, and we've done a full semester with the math, and we'll do a full semester with the ethnic studies.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. I want it to be transparent. I want everybody to understand what it entails, what it involves, and what we are doing. Thank you.
So is it, with most curriculum, there is a parent body that is part of it? Or is it just if there's like a new curriculum coming on board? Because I know, like, for example, with the math, with the adoption of the math textbook, I know that that's an effort for the parents to be involved. So like, how do you envision how parents would potentially be a part of the ethnic studies, like shaping it, or?
Same process. So if we were looking at any resources of purchase or spending any funds, general funds or public dollars, we would always create a committee, both with teachers, students, because it is high school, and parents from the community perspective, to be able to provide feedback before we would bring any recommendation to the board. And so for us, we are looking at utilizing and leveraging Principal Stewart's PAC to be able to select some of the parents to be able to support us in this process.
Thank you.
Dr. Seaman, I had a budgetary question about a couple of the electives, actually. I looked into the health, and it looks like health is no longer required by the state, but we're providing it. Insofar as ethnic studies is concerned, I don't have an opinion on the subject matter one way or another. But I went back and I looked at the law. The way I was reading the law is that it's only operative if the governor is appropriating funds for it. And so different school districts seem to be handling it in different ways. And so I'm just trying to understand, because the January budget just came out, and the governor did not appropriate funds for this. And health also is not required. So I'm not speaking to the subject matter from a fiscal perspective. I just have a little bit of heartburn when we're providing classes that the dollars are not there for the classes. And to me, I look at health that way. For now, ethnic studies, that could change over time. And then, you know, I have a little bit of bone to pick with study hall, because I feel like a lot of the kids are getting pushed into study hall, and that's not really where they want to be. So those are my questions in terms of the finances. Before, I attended the Q and A, and I saw that it was actually offered, ethnic studies was offered, excuse me, to juniors. So am I incorrect in my understanding?
So.
It was on the junior list, maybe it was a mistake, so I thought, I'll ask you here. No, it was.
On the course selection.
It was on the course selection for juniors. To me, that's a mistake, number one. Number two, I think that it gives the juniors the wrong idea because they should be taking a full-year class, and this is just a semester class. And it's not clear there, like, there's no like parenthetical S, you know, versus Y. So for me, from, you know, we were speaking in closed session earlier, and I think the direction of the board is very clear that we are short dollars. So I just have a hard time understanding why there is, why there is your time and funds being spent on it when the governor has not come through on that. And I feel like we get a lot of that. You know, with TK came through, we accommodated, but we're not getting dollars for that, that kind of a thing. We did it earlier than we had to. So from a fiscal perspective, I have questions on both of these, and why we are, why are we going there when we have dollars that need to be spent? I want to spend it on the kids on athletics. I have other things. I personally, I don't speak for the rest of the board, but I have other things that I know that the students want. So that's number one. Number two, to the extent that the dollars do come in, then great, let's have a really robust community conversation about it. But I'd like to know, who is creating the program? Who is teaching the program? What's their training and certification to do it? Where is the curriculum that you're producing? I don't usually put the cart before the horse. If I don't have a curriculum that's been approved by the community and the board, I don't put out a class out there. So I will respectfully disagree with your approach on that one. I think that you're going in the wrong direction first. The funds are not there, the content is not there, but the schedule is there. So I respectfully disagree with you there. Then, in regard to the community input, I mean, you just stated the minimum, which is that 10 days advance notice is required. To me, that's not transparency, and that's not going to give the different stakeholders in the community to meet, debate, argue, get on the same page. The way I see this being rolled out is with the dollars, time, and community input. I mean, already, we had some parents respond very in a knee-jerk way. And so to me, I don't want to disrespect you, but shoving it through at the last minute, I don't think that's going to bring our community together. I think it's going to put people in their corners instead of emphasizing communication and transparency and understanding. I understand that it's a hot topic item, but I worry about the approach. Okay, so I'd like to know more. I'd like to know when we're going to see the curriculum. Are you the person that's developing the curriculum?
Yep.
You're a one, okay, thank you. And I have other questions. I don't want to take up everybody's time, but for me, these are my baseline concerns. I start with the dollars because, as trustees, that's our duty.
But I think it's important too for us then to have a larger conversation then, is we technically then have two elective courses. The board created personal finance, which was going to be a state mandate, and then the governor didn't put funds behind it, and we continued that.
Yes.
And health was at one point a state mandate, and the board continued that as well. Not that I'm advocating for cutting any programs, but we have to look at then all three of them in that same light if we're making decisions in that based off dollars.
So please educate me, because I thought that personal finance now is.
It is not. It is the same where it is a non-funded, a non-funded mandate that we have created. And again, if you remember, we were ahead of the curve. And we have been working on this for two years. We're just not ready to be able to provide the community a product where it will be divisive at some point.
Yeah, of course.
And so when the social studies teachers, the high school administration, and myself are ready to be open, like I said, around mid-March, we're already meeting again on Wednesday. I look forward to that, if that's the direction in which you guys go. But I do think if we're looking at from a financial standpoint, then we need to take all three of those into consideration because they all fall in that same bucket.
For me, I absolutely agree with you, and I have no problem saying that, that the way we treat one is the way we should treat all. So I'm with you there. I just apologize, I didn't know that. I thought that personal finance is, I know we require it for graduation. I thought it was also a state requirement and even a UC requirement. So I will go back and educate myself more on those three, and I look forward to the conversation. And then we, as a board, can discuss, hey, maybe we're not spending our dollars on the extras because they're not getting our kids into school, and they're not preparing them for the standardized exams. And to me, those are my two big things. I want all of our students to get into four-year colleges, and I want all of our students to be achieving on the CASP and the SAT. Welcome, okay, thank you for welcoming me. So that's where I am today. I reserve the right to change my opinion. So let's continue the conversation, please. Thank you.
Well, first of all, several years we started to discuss this, and at that time, there was a choice that we could make a standalone class or it could be an integrated class, which I thought would be good because it would not require another class. But that we would have a definite curriculum for the teachers who would be assigned to teach that, to put that in the curriculum, and they would get coverage for that. I am under the belief that we can still do that. I'm not sure that that's been changed, but that's my belief. That's number one. At this point, I always thought, now, if you add this class, we now have three standalone half-year classes, if we require them, if this goes through. And my question is then, how are the kids going to take a half-year class with that extra, you know, this math problem?
One and a half years, yeah.
I mean, yeah, one and a half years, there's that half year sitting out there. Can they take another half-year class somewhere? I don't know. I mean, that's something that bothers me. So I am open to having a, when we study and prepare the curriculum, the way of doing it in one of two ways. A standalone class, understanding that we need to figure out how to make it. If health is not required, I mean, it's very important, but if it's not a standalone class that has to be taught, maybe that's the way to go around it. I don't know. A finance, I do believe we are mandated to teach a finance class, as I recall.
No, it's the exact same. We are also mandated to teach ethnic studies starting '25, '26.
Okay, now, there is a problem that I have with all this, is that my math, and I was pretty good at math, the year 2930 would be the present eighth graders going into ninth grade next year.
Incoming ninth grade.
My math is good. So the only kids that are going to have to have it, for sure, when they graduate high school, are the present incoming eighth graders. So the push right now to do it, to me, does not seem imminent, and that we can take back our time and study it a little more and make sure we do it right. So that's my concern. I understand the importance of it. I'm for the topics and so on, but right now, why push it if the kids that are going to take it right now don't need it for graduation? Even though they should need it, I mean, to be very honest, for what's going on in the world today. But it is not going to be required. So that's my statement. And so those are the only things that I really are concerned about, and I would love to make sure that there is community input when the classes, the curriculum is formed for whatever type of class it is.
And can I just also mention one logistical thing? Is one of the questions was around ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students and course selection, I'm sorry. That was also truly by design because, like personal finance or like our health class, just because it's mandated for incoming ninth grade students, we wanted to open up the opportunity for other students that wanted to part. for other students that wanted to participate in the program. So, that is why it was there. And so, what I hope to do is be able to work with Dr. Bregge in setting up a study session so the social studies teachers, myself, site-based administration will be able to spend more time walking you through, and then being able to gain the community feedback. Again, we still have over six months before the start of the next school year. And I wish I could duplicate myself so we can get everything done in a timely manner.
I don't think we need to rush though, just to rush to get it in, if we have that timeframe.
That's what I'm saying.
But per ed code, it does state that we have to have a syllabus, and it has to be on the course registration by 25, 26, if you read the ed code. In addition, it is required for all students graduating. 25, 26.
Does it say? Coming in ninth graders have to take it.
If funded?
No, it has to be on there for availability for all entering freshman students.
But it would not be required that they graduate, well, it will be by the time they get there.
It would be required, okay.
Okay, well, to be continued, because I thought it was only self-operative with the funding.
Yeah, you need the funding in order for us to continue it. But I, I have another question regarding the personal finance. You're having it at the middle school also, right? Which is just to catch them up for the kids that want to do it instead of taking it in the high school.
Yep, to free up the high school schedule.
Which is great, but they don't have to take it now, from what I understand?
We have it in our board policy. Students have, are required per board policy, 6114.1, that they are required five units of health and five units of personal finance.
But we're not getting funding for it?
No, not since I've been here.
It's not a UC requirement?
No.
And it's not a state requirement?
No.
Those two are BHUSD requirements.
They, they, they were also at one point unfunded mandates from CD, California Department of Education.
So, we need to look into that.
Yeah, okay.
We need to look into that.
Well, this was, I'm glad we had this conversation, Dr. Seaman, thank you, this was informative, good to know for three of them.
Okay. I'm dyslexia screener. Another non-funded mandate from the California Department of Education, however, there's super importance behind this as well, is that screening all kindergarten through second grade students will start in 25, 26. We are in the process of looking at the four approved screeners that are at the bottom. What I do want to say to both the community, because there could potentially be some concern about an older student, that is the beautiful part about our assessment process. Utilizing iReady all the way down into kindergarten, starting at winter break. We are already, we already have reading scores on all of our kids, and not every school district does that. And so, it, it is, with some of the pushback from some of our elementary parents of utilizing the system like iReady, we have already screened their children for dyslexia. So, this should not be much of a significant change instructionally or lift by our staff. We will, we are looking, or heavily leaning towards AMIRA, which is the very first one on the list. It is actually a free service for us, so it wouldn't actually come at a cost to the district. But we are still working on just vetting all four. We're working with Student Services Department on what does that mean for interventions post when we find students that are potentially dyslexic? What are our next intervention steps? So, we will bring a more fleshed-out plan before the start of 25, collaboration in a presentation so you understand, okay, if a student does call, or is identified with dyslexia, what are, what is A, B, and C, what are the next steps in a row for us? And what potential funds may we need from the district to ensure success of this rollout? But for the older families in the community, just understand that we do utilize our reading scores within iReady to be able to identify any reading discrepancies, letter identification, anything that would allude to potential student with dyslex, uh, being dyslexic, and we already work with Student Services on that. Any questions around dyslexic screener, yes?
So, I think one thing that's important that maybe parents aren't aware, or perhaps some, you know, general education teachers, is that there's a big difference between a child who's just behind in reading and one who has dyslexia. So, iReady is going to show kids, it's going to show both kids who are behind in reading but aren't disabled, and then kids who have dyslexia who are also behind. So, I think that one of the reasons that the governor put this into law is because dyslexia is, is a potential, potentially very costly when it is not recognized early. And in terms of dyslexia, and Ms. Collins-Williams knows as well, it is, it is rare in the sense that it, again, I want to say it is, is not just a kid who's behind in reading. I mean, I can tell the difference, you know, there's, you know, age seven, for example, it's still possible that kids will reverse letters, but a child who's dyslexic may also have like an auditory component. So, there's a lot of tests, and it's, I, I am concerned that a lot of kids who are just behind in reading are going to be put onto the special ed caseload, which won't necessarily make sense. And I know she agrees with me, and then I'm also concerned that those who really need to be identified as having a genuine dyslexia, which is a disability, that they're not getting the specialized help that, that they need. I guess what I'm asking is, what is the training for some of the general education teachers who may not know how to distinguish between a, a child who's just behind in reading versus one who has actual dyslexia?
Yep, and that's part of this bill, actually, is so we're working on not only being able to select the screener that we want to be able to utilize at minimum for a first year, but two, how are we incorporating the professional development for all general education classroom teachers to be able to implement the screener and then understand what are our next steps? And we, we hope, we not hope, we know that the opening days in August will be some of that for elementary teachers. It'll be partially the math adoption, making sure that all teachers understand the new curriculum that was purchased, in addition to part of the screener, so that it'll take up some of our PD days at the beginning, August 12, 13.
But the other question I have too is, what sort of curriculum would you have to address those who are dyslexic? Because, I'm asking, what sort of curriculum or what sort of tools or programs would you use for those who are dyslexic? Because I've seen in schools where unfortunately, they'll take a kid who has dyslexia, and they'll go over just phonics and phonics, ad nauseam, I'm like, no, there's a broken bridge, and you need specialized programming. Right, whether it's Orton-Gillingham or it's. Because it can't just be phonics, I don't want to see that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Old news, we're going to Japan. Thank you, thank you for approving. Cool news, for those that are listening, all juniors, something brand new this year. We spent a lot of time the last year, year and a half. One of the things that, as the Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, I always work with the board and the community around wrapping our mind around how a lot of our students go to SMC, predominantly for the first two years. And so, when our administration came in, if you remember, we were offering 15 college credits that were concurrently enrolled after school through West LA. We would get full classes, but we weren't able to offer a lot. And as we started to unpack this further, we worked with high school administration, and we have just launched our inaugural Early College Academy. What does that mean? Is that allows students to be able to be concurrently enrolled both here in BHUSD and at SMC. They will, right now, we are in the application process, it is only open to our current juniors when they go to senior year. As a senior, they will then, if selected, they will work with us during the second semester to get registered with SMC. Over the summer, they will take a class for Counseling 20, which gives them the opportunity and exposure to be on SMC's campus, so they will be taking that during summer school. And then throughout the school year, you'll see in the key details, the fall and spring semester, they will be attending classes at SMC from 8:00 to 9:30. And then, right around that nutrition time, they will make their way back to BHUSD. The great part about it is, they can still participate in things like ASB and athletics, and take their Gov Econ class here. But when they graduate from Beverly, they will graduate with their high school diploma and 15 transcripted credits from SMC. So, they will enter into their freshman year with a 15-credit buffer without even including the AP coursework that they possibly completed and earned. And so, all the details are on the slide. Communication has come out from my office directly to all 11th grade families. I'll send reminders because we are hosting our selection process and announcing our candidates by March 11th, because we have to onboard them at SMC, get them feeling comfortable with their level of technology, introduce them to their counselor at SMC, and helping that transition. Any questions around the Early College Academy?
I, I have a question.
Yes.
So, I wanted to ask if, let's say, the students that are being picked, because you have to be approved in order to do the program, will they, will we have transportation for them?
Transportation is on their own.
So, I think we should probably decide to do transportation. I'll tell you, because that's an incentive for them to continue, and they're juniors, who's going to take them? Their parents that are working? It's very difficult. So, if they go to SMC and they do this course, it helps in so many ways that we don't have our kids graduating, because that's, and going to SMC, they'll end up going to university, and that's what we want them to do. So, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
That's what we have to check.
I was going to say.
I shouldn't be answering, but.
I personally, I don't know if I agree with that. I, I do think that it's very caring of you to want to provide that. I just worry that if we start offering transportation, that's like a fiscal, financial and operational nightmare, and I see our director, our superintendent of fiscal services is nodding. So, I don't know, I mean, if that's something you're interested in, we can look into it. But I feel like this should be at no cost to us, personally.
Because we're still providing the students with their free education here at BHUSD. They're still taking, we're minimizing their five-course requirement as a senior to four. But most of them will probably take a fifth with athletics, or be in robotics, or K-Bev, or an evening program.
I think it's fantastic, and I think because of the hours, you're saying from 8:00 AM to 9:30.
Yep.
So, we have to figure out something so that the students can do that. Because we don't want them to miss their regular classes in high school in their.
Yeah, they, we, we would only schedule them for the second course, the second block, because our first blocks are 90 minutes long. They would not be scheduled until the second block in each day. So, we will not miss any courses. They'll have plenty of time to be able to make it from SMC to BHHS, and potentially still grab our nutrition.
My meaning is, let's say, a student can't do it because they don't have transportation, but they want to do it. I mean, maybe we can figure out carpooling.
Yep.
I understand the funding and the liability.
We do have, we do have.
Just want to make it, and it's new.
Yeah.
So, we have to figure it out.
We do have waivers where we do allow carpooling in effect. So, students, when they participate in this program, will sign off on a waiver. They'll all be able to see who's all in the program as of March 11. So, again, exactly that, like, they could have car trouble, they may not have a car, they could work collaboratively on being able to get to. We see that with a lot of our student athletes when they go to competitions and programs, so.
It's definitely something we can talk about further. It just, it, it opens the door to a lot of our students that have opportunities off-campus that it may open up, you know, it could be that we're requiring transportation and for a lot of other programs, so.
But it's more than just a program, it's like a class, it's an extra class. So, instead of here on campus, it's at Santa Monica College.
Yeah.
Right.
And we can flush that out.
Yeah, we can.
Any questions? No, okay.
I just have three quick questions. We emailed about this, but they can also transfer to USC with this, right?
Correct. Agnesi, so you'll see in the top program highlights portion, obviously, the 15 transferable credits. We only selected Agnesi credits, which are transferable to Syracuse College, Syracuse University, to Florida State. Obviously, your Ivy League schools do not accept Agnesi credits, but they also won't let you in without taking AP or college-level coursework.
So, it helps.
So, it helps their application process. But an example is Harvard does not give you AP credits, but you won't get into Harvard without taking AP.
Okay, so I would just encourage you to add, and other schools.
Yep.
You know. In regard to the selection process, what's happening there? Are you trying to assess, yes, this student could handle being a college and high school student at the same time, like?
Yes, so, part of the application process is a short essay for us to be able to see what's the purpose behind it. It's not so you don't get to come to campus to BHHS. But it's also around, we're looking at attendance. We don't want to put students into an inaugural program where then SMC, it burns bridges for us as well. We're building this bridge with them, we want to make sure that the students have good attendance here at BHUSD, are academically competitive, so they are able to do the college caliber level of work while still maintaining coursework here. So, there, there's a three-pronged approach for us. There'll be some student interviews.
Okay, thank you. And then, what does this mean, and will concurrently complete remaining BHHS requirements? What I'm asking is, are they also getting these English, government, and econ credit?
They're, no, they're taking it concurrently with us.
Okay.
They still have to take English 12 or AP English with us here at BHHS.
But they don't get any, do they get BHHS credit for, it's extra, it's, there's no overlap?
No overlap, it's in addition to.
I actually did this when I went to high school, but it was after school. It's, it's a college course that you take during high school. It's a, it's fantastic.
Remy, what's your take?
Well, I just had a question. I know how, what I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that when students don't go straight to four-year, and let's say they go to community college first and then transfer from there, that's not, that's not the best for our school, right, correct?
So, for our data, so our dashboard, it only reflects that they are enrolled into a two-year institution. We do not get any credit for when they leave SMC or West LA.
Okay, but in this way, if they're doing it a part of our school and then transfer, wow.
So, because students are then currently concurrently enrolled or dual-enrolled, we get credit towards our college career readiness indicators and things like US News and World Report and Blue Ribbon Schools. This now helps with how many students are college-ready.
Okay.
Plus, it looks good on their, you know, when they.
For a student, it's excellent. Student resume, they have two transcripts when they apply, so like you just went through the application process, you would have submitted both a BHUSD transcript and a Santa Monica College transcript.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, because I know a lot of students, like, right now, a lot of people are thinking like the SMC pathway because it's easier, but this way, it's beneficial to both the school and those students, and it, it's a win-win for everyone.
Totally. It helps students be able to get those college credits done earlier, be able to transfer into the four-year institution of their choice. So, it really does help our kids. Okay, yep.
Dustin, I would like to ask just a couple, couple additional questions. Have you thought about trying to align this program, though it's SMC, with getting kids? I know it's getting harder for kids to get into SMC, I mean, USC and UC campuses out of SMC. It's becoming more difficult to try to align this program, maybe with some of the closer out-of-state schools, like maybe Oregon, Arizona.
Four years.
I, I think that that might be something we should look into because it's getting more difficult to get into the UC campuses than the SC campus from this, going to SMC first. I do like this program because what happens is the kids are going to matriculate from SMC sooner if they can get in because they got the college credit in advance. But I would hope, hope this does not deter them from saying, well, I'm going to go to the SMC and so on, and they don't really try to get into a four-year college out of the high school. That, as you know, that's been a pet peeve of mine for years. I understand if they don't get into one, but they try, and even if they get in, they say, well, I'm going to stay home for two years, it's not so expensive. But I really want to see that rigor to get into the four-year college, to become part of our high school campus.
Is there any program that they can try to do a class at the universities that we have around, like UCLA or USC?
Yes.
That would connect with Beverly Hills?
Yep, we have quite a few students, actually, it's called concurrently enrolled, similar to what this is, that will take summer programs. And they will enroll in a UCLA course that, they offer both high school courses, such as STEM and other related opportunities for them to be on campus. But then, some actually do qualify for higher-level coursework. We have some students in your class that are taking college-level math because we don't offer, we only offer up to AP Calculus BC, and we have kids that are taking Calc III. And so, we actually have them already. And so, we actually have them already going, whether that be SMC or other schools. Some, one kid's taking a course on Johns Hopkins online, so we have a lot of kids that do concurrent enrollment with other universities, not just SMC.
Thank you.
Okay. We need to get going here, so...
Okay.
I'm going to talk so fast, I thought I was.
Please, let's try to get through this.
All right, here we go. Summer school.
So important.
For all, all the people in the community, all the summer school has been sent out. What does that mean? Students in K through 4th grade had an invitation if they qualified for Title I Services or English Language Learning. We sent that communication out. We already have registration. We sent out communication to our middle school and to our high school students. So, any questions, please direct them right to me, dseaman@bhustd.org. Right now, we're in February, so we have released the teacher application for summer employment. In March, we will confirm employment. You'll see that on the certificated report, and then we will notify students of registration for summer school. We have a very robust offering, we're super excited. We'll be hosting it at Horace Mann this year. The city programs will be hosted at El Rodeo. Any questions? Summer school.
Is it going to be online for the high school?
No, it is in person.
Oh, okay. Let's go level by level.
Perfect.
Okay. So, for elementary school, my understanding is that we are, we are only offering summer school to about 20% of our elementary school students. Let's work the numbers out together.
Yeah, it went out to 212 students.
Out of like 1,200?
Correct.
Okay, hold on, please. So, that's only 17%, Dr. Seaman. So, let's talk about where I would like to spend dollars, and I really ask my board to support me in this effort. This is my understanding of elementary school summer school. A couple of years ago, BHEF, and that was before I was in this district.
Yep.
So, correct me. BHEF used to do the summer school program. It was robust, much more than 17% of our students were, there was availability for a lot more than 17% of our students.
Yep.
So far?
So, so, BHEF did run it under support with...
Yes.
I love Chrissy Austin's right back there. She helped with...
In conjunction with BHUSD.
With, in conjunction with BHUSD and Ed Services. We offered a lot of programs, but they didn't necessarily run or weren't necessarily full.
Okay. The summer school that we are currently offering to these 17, 18% students is at no cost to the district, because you are using funds that come from the government.
Correct. We have the Extended Learning Opportunity Program grant.
ELOP.
Yes, that funds our TK through 5th grade students.
Okay. But when the BHUSD-BHEF joint venture was happening, we were charging the parents for summer school?
Not us, BHEF was.
BHEF was.
Correct.
Okay.
We cannot charge families for summer programs.
We cannot.
We cannot.
So, so, then, in that case, our choices are that the district funds more summer school availability, right?
Yep.
Or, we go back to some kind of a joint venture scenario, where a third-party entity that is affiliated with us can offer summer school for a, for a reasonable fee.
Correct.
Okay. So, let's talk about our Horace Mann students. A lot of them did not score well on the standardized testing last year. I would say something like 60% of them were not getting, not meeting the standards. And for El Rodeo, it was something like 30% of them. I'm approximating.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
The numbers are, are actually, it's beside the point.
Yep.
The point is that our students are not getting the education in the nine-month period to achieve on standardized tests, and then they're nudging forward into the middle school, and it's going to become harder and harder to get those fours, to get those 90% to move up into honors, so on and so forth. So, what will, what do you need from this board in order to provide a more robust summer school program at all levels?
I don't like I-statements. I can create anything. He has to give me money.
Yes.
I'm getting out of here.
Okay, great. Let's, so this is, we've been talking about this since August, and if academic achievement is our number-one priority, which that's the mission, and that's the vision, is to get these kids educated, then let's start putting the dollars where it's going to help us, where it will help our teachers, for the students to bridge the gap in the summer, and so that we can start to actually make some gains. Dr. Hasty, I need a proposal from you, please.
Before he proposes his proposal, I'd like to say the...
Please.
Summer, the summer school classes, how many hours are we suggesting? Because I remember when we used to have full days of summer school.
Yeah.
So, depends on, again, I'm going from contextually, and I know what's happened here. A lot of districts offer remediation for the LOPE-type students that are from that morning session, and they're usually done by about 12:00 or 12:30.
Yes.
And again, that, this is not just here, but then usually...
Dr. Hasty, we have a mission at BHUSD to be worthy of the dollars that our community has been giving us through taxpayer money. We are missing the mark, and we need to put money towards getting our students educated, and it has to be more than the 17% that are getting it. It's not enough, and our, and our scores reflect that it's not enough.
Got it. Another option Dr. Seaman and I are actively looking at is partnering with a possible vendor, and this is what a lot of districts are doing.
Okay.
And I know in my past experience, there is a vendor we will come to an agreement with. We would use the same vendor for the LOPE, but also, the same students could attend the vendor program as well, to pay students. And so, that could be something that could be worked in conjunction. For example, I'd have those summer school remediation students, they would come half-day, then go to the vendor in the afternoon, but I could also have full-day students, they would again have to pay that vendor separately, but they could be co-located in the same areas. This is something we are just really in early exploration, but at the end of the day, we'd have to look at doing an RFP and bring some things to board.
Well, respectfully, I know you're new to the party, but I've been screaming and shouting about this since the summer, when we got our scores for last year, and this is seriously the most important thing that we, the biggest decision we can make for our students right now, is for them to not lose valuable time in the summer. And trust me, I wish I did not have to have this conversation, that the scores were up and everybody was achieving, but it's not happening. And the, and two things. The fact is, those bridge classes that we used to offer in a more robust way were super reputable. The parents and the students loved them. I liked them, from what I heard about them, because Dr. Seaman was in control of them, and he could verify the education. So, if you're going to go in the direction of a vendor, which it seems like you have no other choice to do that, I welcome your proposal, and I ask my colleagues to support me in this regard, but please make sure it's something that's not going to be a waste of anybody's time or money. We don't have a whole summer to make a mistake on this one.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes.
It's possible, but not for sure, but it's very possible that the same kids who are underperforming are the ones who will not elect to go to summer school.
So, that, that's exactly what I wanted to bring up.
No, no, guys.
Problem entry, though. We're, for elementary is different than for secondary.
The parents are deciding.
Yes, but I understand what Dr. Stern is mentioning. So, my, what I wanted to say is that what we can do, not only, you know, teach the, the children that are doing not so good, but advancing them also. So, let's say, if they're interested in some other courses or something, we can have that available during the summer, and even the kids that are not doing well, not just review what they didn't do well, so, you know, to her point that they won't even come because they're bored, and they don't want to even do the review, because they didn't do well in the first place, make it more interesting. So, let's say if they're in 3rd grade, they're actually learning 4th grade, the beginning of 4th grade, end of 3rd grade, not realizing it, kind of mixing it together, so that they'll be prepared for 4th grade, and they'll get excited about that. So, when they start 4th grade, they're already learning, because they've already practiced during the summer. And I think we should get a lot of kids on board with that, if they're not going on vacation or doing anything.
Yeah.
Ideally, you would, you would offer the intervention remediation piece coexisting with enrichment, as well as what you're...
Enrichment, exactly.
Yeah. Great point. The, the programs that the kids enjoy and they're learning, that spreads like wildfire. So, if we get it done right the first summer, we're going to be setting ourselves up for success. I got a ton of compliments about the summer school program, which I shared with you immediately, and parents were asking for more of it, not less. And I promise you, once their students are in the seat, getting a good education, it's, it's going to be synergistic.
And adding sports to that.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes. So, are we still on elementary?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we already have launched those that qualify for the ELOP.
Yes.
Or the Extended Learning Opportunity Program. I think that one of the things that I mentioned hours, and I, my computer died, so I had to go steal Chrissy's, so that's what I was doing, is it's, you know, 8:30 to 2:30 under our control, and then the 2:30 to 6:00 would be that vendor situation, where again, you mentioned, that could be charged to the family that doesn't qualify through the grant, but can we look at our current registration, open seats that are available? Because we're teaching our summer school as rising. We're not doing mediation or recovery. We are actually doing it, that's why the students...
Which is why people love it.
It's an introduction to the next grade.
It's a bridge, yeah.
Transition into, yes, it's a bridge. And so, we could look at open spaces, and then what that potentially could cost to the district for the additional, and potentially survey those that weren't involved in the first registration process.
Yeah. But how would this work out, what you two gentlemen are proposing? Because the, the students who benefit from the federal funding are separate, so they're with, they're under your care from 8:30 to 2:30, taught by BHUSD teachers, and then 2:30 to 5:30, how does the, the vendor apply to them? It just gives them the all-day op, option?
Correct. It's under a childcare bill, which is in addition, and so, but we, we select STAR, which we use for our gate program, so there's an educational value to it. It's not just go carry dodgeball around on the court, on the, you know, on the playground.
But then, for the non-federal funding students, it would be the vendor from 8:30 on the full day, right?
Potentially, or with us, within open seats, or potentially bringing to you what may that might cost us out of general fund.
Yeah.
And typically, we would bring a draft to the board of an RFP, so you guys would be able to see what would be asked, and then that, before we post that.
Dr. Hasty, the only thing I'll say about an RFP, and I, I do want to make sure that it is a transparent process, and that the dollars make sense, but we are, you know, my mom, as my mom would tell you, it's already March, you know, when it's early February, and so, just please be careful with the timing of the situation, because I feel like families are making summer plans the minute they get back from spring break.
But I think that we can at least bring to you part of the strategic plan, and we'll couch it into, and not a new-gen item, into Sarah and Antares' presentation, is the potential of what that could potentially impact the board to consider.
Thank you. So, we can move it forward nonetheless.
Correct.
Thank you. Are we all on the same page about this, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Middle school, high school, before we move on.
Yeah. So, middle school, high school, I, I think it's the same thing, they need the bridge, but also, we've had really honest conversations that there is a gap between what happens naturally, what happens in the middle school versus what you, how students would learn in the elementary school. It's something we've spoken about very honestly with the principals even. And so, as Avid, for example, is available to just a chunk of the kids, how about a summer, you know, an intense Avid boot camp?
We, we do have, so within the program that we're offering, it is rising again. So, it's the 5th graders' learning, 6th grade introductory standards.
Yes.
To be prepared to go into middle school, and it's in a three-quarter rotation, so they'll have an hour of math, an hour of ELA, and then an hour of WICR strategies, which are the Avid strategies. Our Avid teachers are actually teaching them directly.
Okay, but is that also only 17% of...
It is only currently open to our Title I and REL students, and so I...
Great. And good for them. Good, great, they need it a lot, but we should be putting the dollars towards educating the kids. So, okay, now, now that we're on to middle school, at what point are we going to provide a middle school academic summer boot camp program, or bridge program, and harmonize it with our athletics program? Like, I'll give you an example, okay? Let's say you're a 6th grade mom, and your student is a tennis player and a basketball player. Last summer, that meant that you were dropping, and, and you're working, and you're a single mom, okay? So, you're dropping your 6th grader off at 8:00 or 10:00 AM for a two-hour slot. Basketball is like six hours later from 4:00 to 6:00. So, what is your student doing between 12:00 to 4:00? Nothing. Which means, as a mom, you're, you're just dropping them off for these two-hour slots. It's not working for anybody. Wouldn't it be great if our middle schoolers could have these options to hop into these two-hour academic boost sessions for the, not just, for the four weeks? You know what I mean? Where you're doing your tennis, for two hours, you have an option to do math, review, and rising, then for two hours, you have the option to do English, essay writing, CER, review and rising. You're, you're there, and then at 4:00, you get your second sport in.
Yeah.
I, I think it's time to harmonize. I don't know if this is the year, because the facilities may not be there.
Yeah. So, yeah, I was in a district, we did that, but we, it wasn't so much two hours, they would, instead of doing the morning academic summer school, they'd do the athletics program.
And then it was hot.
And that was partnered with a foundation.
Yeah.
But then, the afternoon went into the vendor, back to like a vendor that would help out with the support. But what you're saying, if it were more harmonized, where we're actually having more of a schedule that involves specific athletics, is something definitely we could explore.
Please. I mean...
Facilities permitted.
Yes.
I, I agree with Judy.
Right?
That's, absolutely. If we have something in the summer, and we have the education, the kids want to play, they want to enjoy themselves, so they'll stay there for the education. They'll do both, so that will benefit us.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the high school is the high school that's happening.
And it's open to all students.
Yes.
Credit recovery, there's some advancement courses.
So, why can, why at the high school is it open to all students, but we don't have that for elementary and middle school?
Because we have to provide a credit recovery program for our kids, and the only random electives is the health and personal finance. And so, that's really at barely any cost to us at all.
Okay.
Yeah. It allows us to free up their master scheduling for other pathways, which we have all year-long courses currently, so it, it, that's kind of low-hanging fruit.
Yeah. But if we don't offer it, then it's neither here nor there.
For, for the high school, they're, they're more motivated, they want to take classes.
Yeah.
So, if we opened up more classes in the summer, that was one semester, and they could get the credits for it, that's also fantastic.
Okay.
Even if they have to pay for it, I think, you know...
So, thank you in advance. I know this is going to be a lift, but I think that this is how we're going to move I know this is going to be a lift, but I think that this is how we're going to move the needle on our academic achievement.
So I heard Dr. Hasty's is going to find more money for me.
Oh, I know. He's going to buy a lottery ticket tonight.
I think it's, it's also just bringing back a proposal, because it's a, it, it's going to be kind of a slow roll into this, because you, we want it to be systemic, we want people to buy into it and know that it's a quality program. So it's a lot, but it's, I absolutely see where you're going.
Okay, I'm almost done for those, so, National Blue Ribbon Schools, one of the questions from board was just criteria. Criteria is listed here. I also provided it in your packet. It's something that I believe during our strategic plan is a great conversation that we can talk with our principals, they'll be there on the twenty-fifth. So just for sake of time, I think we can hold off the criteria is there for you guys to consider. If you have any questions, please, let's discuss those around our current data set on the twenty-fifth. If you guys are okay with that, I can continue on.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yep, the next thing is just again, congratulations to Beverly Vista Middle School. I don't think people understand what a huge lift this is for them to be recognized. There's even some parents in the community out, out here that were part of the focus group that were interviewed, so I appreciate that, their participation in the process. They interviewed kids, they interviewed teachers, so congratulations. And then just on the left-hand side is our WASC upcoming visit for BHHS. Some of our parents and students and teachers and board members will take part in that as well. It's super important that we get accredited through the organization, our last accreditation process under, you know, we got a six-year, which is the highest review, where they won't come back until six years' time. So that's just another thing that's coming up, just for everyone in the community to be aware of. The last two pieces are advocacy pieces. In, in front of you guys, some of you have a flyer, I did not put it in my slide deck. If you could raise it up so the camera can get it. One of the things I want the Board of Education to partner with Education Services, the Bor, the, the school district, Beverly Vista Middle School, Elrodeo and Horace Mann, is the Wait Until Eight campaign. What does that mean for us? It is not around, I, I, I want to make sure that we're very clear on what we utilize technology for instructionally and educationally is different than what we are concerned about educationally, which is the cell phones and the social media component to it. This is not saying that a family cannot buy their child a cellphone for communication purposes, because we all grew up where we put, we carried a pocketful of quarters. Well, there are no more payphones. So some of our families do need that communication piece, but you can buy cell phones that are not smartphones. You do not need to buy a brand-new driver, a Ferrari, or, you know, a, the most highest end car as they're learning how to navigate a system. Same thing with a cellphone. We hope to make a competition, we want to meet with our PTAs and be able to create a school-by-school competition around having our families and our students taking the pledge around waiting till eighth for a social media-capable phone going into high school, where they can make better decisions for themselves on what they're navigating, whereas we believe in still having a communication device, just not one that is capable of helping them cheat on assessments. It aligns directly with the board policy. We already have board policy around no cell phones in TK through eighth grade, so this lines up nicely with that. It is in collaboration with a group of parents, so I want to thank that group of parents, I will actually bring them up as a spotlight for their support and help. I just wanted for us to kind of get the green light. We also want to work with our Human Relations Committee at the city for their support in this as well. So it's going to be a multi-pronged approach of really getting the message out, really educating parents, looking at the pledge. We could potentially be a school district on the Wait Till Eight campaign website for that. Yep.
Includes safety, health and safety.
Yes, perfect. You got to invite me.
Why isn't it wait until ninth? Since K through eight, you know, we're saying you can't have it, you know, during operational hours in ninth grade, you could with some parameters. Wouldn't that actually make more sense? I know, but I, I always hear wait until eighth.
It's, it's a national, yeah.
We should say wait till the end of eighth.
We could throw an end in our, in our flyer.
Yeah, so that, you know, by ninth grade, they have that.
Yeah.
Well, it, it aligns nicely with the, the new board policy too, for middle school, so I think that this is something that we can really get behind and start working with a group of parents.
Perfect. And the last thing, this is kind of a personal ask a little bit, so in the fall, some of the advocacy work that we've done around Education Services is really working at the state level of getting a voice at the table around our assessments in predominantly in eleventh grade. Our poor junior students are over-assessed. I'm the first one, I love data and I love assessments, but I also understand the stress that we put on our eleventh grade kids. They go into, an EL student alone could potentially go into February taking the LPAC assessment, turn around and then have just taken the NWEA assessment, then turn around and then preparing for the CASP exam, then the SAT, then the ACT, and then AP. And pretty much all second semester is almost all around taking assessments. I, I just want to remind the community, I'm new to the state. Not new, I've been here eight years, however, when I came in, I didn't understand the concept behind CASP exam in eleventh grade. What I've provided the Board of Education is a letter that I wrote towards the Association of California School Administrators. I have presented that to Tony Thurman, who is the Superintendent of Instruction at the California Department of Education. We have sent it to local administrators. We also have our Region 14 supporting us with communication. I'm asking the Board of Education to review the newsletter, this is actually an article that I wrote, and would consider writing with Dr. Braggie in collaboration, and sending a letter similar to the California School Board Association in opposition of the CASP exam for eleventh grade students. What does that mean? You see here is, by providing all students in the state, if you want to talk about funds, equity and access, all kids should have access to SAT School Day, not just Beverly Hills kids. And instead of taking the CASP exam, which takes up two weeks of our assessment time, our instructional time, SAT School Day takes one day, or even the ACT School Day takes one day. It would take one day out of instruction, we would gain nine days of instruction back out of our junior calendar. We would alleviate so much stress and anxiety off of our students. We are a prime example of the discrepancy between where we perform on CASP to actually how well we perform on the SAT, because it's a free college assessment for those kids. I'll pause there, so I just kind of, is there any questions? And then if you guys are comfortable, Dr. Braggie and I can work collaboratively, I'm drafting a letter on your behalf to be able to potentially send to the California School Board Association President on our behalf to back up. The more people that we get to engage in this conversation, the better chances of change we can make.
I mean, I, I'm comfortable with that, because we already discussed that, it's so hard to get the high schoolers to focus on the CASP, and so it's not really reflecting what they, what they can achieve, because for them, it's like, what's the point? So you have my support in this regard. Thank you.
So it costs right now the state thirty-nine dot, sorry, I really, it's thirty-nine dollars per student for a CASP exam, and that's what the state's paying out of their state budget. And the, we're one of thirteen states that utilize the CASP exam for eleventh grade. All other states do utilize ACT or SAT School Day. At some of the larger contracts, when you look at like Florida or Texas, it's around about seventy-four dollars per student, would increase the state budget. But when you're talking about equity and access across the full state, where every kid has access to an SAT exam or an ACT exam, that's a great narrative for us as a state.
Thirty-seven states are like that.
Correct.
Yes.
And that's what their US News and World Report rankings are based on, that's how they make Blue Ribbon Schools. They aren't making it based off their CASP exam, but us Californian schools are based off the CASP exam and not the SAT exam or the ACT exam.
So advocating, what do you think your results will be? Like, how long would it take?
Well, I'm going there in April for Ledge Action Day Two, and I'm going to walk around and drop flyers everywhere if we have to. No, I think that we, all of us in the district, sit on different state-level organizations, and we're trying to kind of spread the word and get momentum here. And I think student organizations standing up, your ASB organizations is a great way. I can work with Remy as well around getting you guys to represent, because we're losing a lot of instructional time.
Would it also take CASP away from like elementary and middle school?
No, we would still maintain for T, or for third through eighth, you still want that assessment. I know it sucks to be assessed, but it gives us a really.
Yeah.
Great barometer of how well our kids are performing.
And it places those people, it could still, it still determines where if they're going to honors or not.
Yeah, we would still be assessing eleventh grade performance, but we would be utilizing the SAT or the ACT.
Yeah.
Which gives the kids a free college assessment. CASP does not provide anything for post-secondary for them at this time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we were able to finish Education Services. And so we can now get on with the planning and facilities. Item A, we accept and filing of a notice of completion for the Horace Mann TK patio shade structure with TLS choice. I make a motion to accept and file. Do I have a second?
Who second? Can we do all three at the same time?
Uh, no, because there's a, I, I would prefer to do them separately.
Okay.
Well, A and B you can do the same, we can do A and B together. I make a motion to accept and the filing of the notice of completion for the Horace Mann existing playground shade structure project with TLS choice. A and B, I make a motion.
These two.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor? Are there any questions?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion to accept and the filing of a notice of completion for the Elrodeo ball wall repair project with Garza Construction. Do I have a second?
I second.
Judy, thank you. Any questions or comments? By the way, if there's anybody that wants to know what that's about, that was the extension of the wall, so that the ball, the soccer field would not go over the fence, and it's raised very, very high. You can hardly see it's there, it doesn't, it's very unnoticed, except for the big poles, but it's really wonderful. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of the first reading of the board policy five-one-one-point-one, the district residency.
I can speak to that, President Marcus, as well as Mrs. Collins-Williams. This was brought up, and this was mentioned in a couple of superintendent's reports as well, to increase our, our visibility and our accountability, if you will, for district residency. The part that's added onto an existing policy is this three-pronged approach, which essentially is the accountability piece when people are moving into the district and they're, in essence, wasn't that accountability piece. We have now worked into a little bit more than what we can do in a Student Services Department with checking in on homes. This is a bit more aggressive, but again, more accountable.
Okay. We need an approval for the first reading, right, on this?
Right, and, and you are welcome to send Mrs. Collins-Williams and I any questions or any additions that you would like to make, since this is just a first reading.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hadn't seen this exact document. I trust that it's what we discussed and agreed upon, but I would love to like read this.
Oh, you got a red line?
I mean, I, I just found this.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it's, it's really just the last part.
It's kind of what we all spoke about.
It's, it's right, so it's a kind of a collaboration of, of what was discussed.
Which section are you wanting to read? I'm on the.
It's the very last, it's a very last page.
Legal and financial accountability.
Intra-district attendant. Yeah. The only thing I want to say is, Mrs. Collins-Williams shared with us that enrollment is coming up soon, and so that's the only reason why we have some urgency here, because is it, current re-enrollment is February eighteenth?
The portal opens on the eighteenth, correct.
I told you, it's already March. So, okay, so in that case, I'm going to give you my feedback now, and of course, Dr. Stern.
Well, which one did you go upon?
I went upon the one that was on the agenda.
Correct, the last page is what we're looking at.
Right.
Because the previous pages were already approved in November.
I think Dr. Stern might have a different document. Let me see. Yes, it's the one in bigger print. It says in blue at the top, new draft edition.
Right, it's the very, very last page.
Okay.
I, I have a couple of questions. I wanted to ask, are we opening up the grandparents' permit?
So that.
Is there like a?
I understand that is the discussion for the next policy.
Okay.
Currently, it is on the books, but it's my understanding the board wants to review that and determine whether or not that will be offered this school coming school year.
And my next question is, there are some families that have a student in Elrodeo, and then they have another child in Horace Mann. Is there any policy that we can do so that the students stay in the same school?
That's going to be discussed under the next policy as well.
Okay, perfect, perfect, thank you.
Five-one-one-seven.
Ms. Collins-Williams, one question. I just mentioned to Dr. Braggie, there was something that I read, and I don't know if it was in this one or the next one, where you are going to check the enrollment of children every year, when they enter kindergarten through sixth, and then it says, and again, in ninth grade. I wondered why you don't have that there for sixth grade, and I noticed that was missing on one of them. I'd like to make sure that we check them in kindergarten or when they first, whenever they enroll, and then sixth grade and then ninth grade.
Okay, and, and that would be in five-one-one-seven, and also just a reminder.
Is that in the next one?
Yes, and just a reminder, we, we do data confirmation annually, so, yes, we can add that as well.
Do I have a motion for the first reading?
Next time. I don't know, I didn't hear.
I'd like to just make a couple minor comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, all families must, one-one, paragraph one-one.
Yep.
All families must provide accurate and up-to-date residency documentation at the time of enrollment and upon any material change in residence. So this kind of goes to Mrs. Marcus's statement a minute ago. The fifty-one-eleven already provides that we as a district have to ask for it on an annual basis.
Correct.
My understanding is what we're doing on an annual basis is just asking for an, a confirmation of check this box if, unless you've moved.
Yes, in the sense of, you, if you are confirming that your address remains the same, you check the box. If you are requesting to change your address.
Yeah.
You have to then submit the updated documentation to verify that new, that new residency.
Okay, so then my.
A residence.
I hear you. My question is, what happens about the families who are not doing that? Because I understand that we have a good handful of families that used to live in Beverly Hills but don't anymore. And you know that, I've, I've been saying, when Elrodeo opened up, we dealt with this with a ton of families, and I think that some slipped through the cracks, not through your fault, because you're not a private investigator, but just because, you know, they're smart. And so I think that when the high school front lawn and performing arts wing comes online this summer or fall, we're going to have the same situation again.
So I think that would be addressed kind of in the second paragraph and, and a couple of the things, I, I want to agree with you in the sense, Mrs. Manicherry, that a lot of times we receive returned mail. When school sites or, or my department mails out things to parents and it comes back, and I'm just going to be honest, we don't have the manpower to go check everyone.
Okay.
And so I think the, the support that we're asking for, number two, will help with that, and I think also the verification of the information, that, that even if I'm saying my address hasn't changed, the software that we've been discussing to help verify that information will also assist in that concern.
Okay, so then, so let me ask you, would it be better if we, for re-enrollment and verification, if we broke it up, so that as an example, every year, one-fourth of the, one-fourth of the community is audited? I mean, we have like three thousand students, which, let's say on average, that means we have a thousand families. So, for example, you could do in year, it would be a rotation, if you're saying that it's too, and I acknowledge, it's a big burden, but it needs to get done. So what do you guys want to do? Do you want to do a rotation, a four-year rotation or a three-year rotation, where every third?
We think we'll have people who will slip through the cracks on that, I don't.
So we can do it, you want to do it every year? I'm, I'm okay with that.
I know that if they come in with one document showing they live there with a driver's license or, just, just to continuously have to know that they have to do that.
Okay. It'll deter them. So let's do it.
We could make it as part of the annual confirmation process, that you just upload a document.
Yes.
That goes along with the online confirmation that you're doing, like you upload your.
A re-verification.
Yes, your, your utility bill, your, your, your driver's license or something like that.
Something current. Are we all good with that? Re-verification? Okay, so one, re-verification.
So we could use the, the technology that's available, just.
Right, it would be part of how we push it out through parent square.
Yeah.
We would just make it where they, where you do the signature, you upload that document and, and send it.
Great.
Yeah, you can take a picture, you can upload it. Yeah, it has multiple ways to send information.
And then where is there...were you able to identify a computer program that cross-references and says, hey, actually, I think this person lives in Beverlywood or Palms or...
I have not. I know Dr. Brighi's been looking at some things.
Yeah, I looked at one and then asked for some school districts that they were using, and they provided me with one, which I won't say publicly, but they did not give great reviews. So they're out there. It's just finding the right one that uses, you know, a school district database. But they're out there, but people can beat the system.
Okay, so are you needing authorization for a private investigator? Or what are you needing from the district so that you can really be ready to see this through?
Definitely assistance in checking residents that are, we think that the information is false or the ability, the manpower to do that. So yes, the private investigator.
Okay.
And also...
I think it's both, really.
Yeah, also, there's going to be some additional support, staffing needed during enrollment just to...now we're looking at every piece, every document that's coming in. So usually, we either provide overtime to the staff, or we have someone come in and help temporarily.
Okay, so are we, as a board, giving Mrs. Collins-Williams a green light to pursue some additional staff and a private investigator so that her team is not the one having to go out and make the house visits and so on?
I don't know if an actual California licensed private investigator is needed. That is, in my opinion...
Oh, yeah, no, that's not what I meant.
Being a California licensed private investigator myself.
Like a residency investigator.
Yeah, residency.
Residency.
Yeah, that works for school districts.
Because we don't need to be paying $400 an hour for someone to go and, you know, do that.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm with you.
Okay, so approval of the first reading, all those in favor?
Wait, hold on a second. Rochelle? Okay, I have an issue here. So when I looked at the agenda to, like, go over this, I had one thing, but now I'm sitting here, and there's all these other things for review. Some members have them and some don't, so...
There's two different...one is for the next one.
Right.
And it's one one one, and one is one point seven.
Right, but Judy, you had this one.
The only thing I would like to say about the five one one seven, that I would love to be able to see it without the regular formatting.
I can't really sit and read all this right now. I can't sit here and read all this right now.
No, well...
The only change on this one, Dr. Stern, is the last page. The board already approved the previous pages in November. So the only thing that we're actually adding is the last page with the three different pieces. And some of it's contained in the other thing, but it's only a first reading. We can come back again.
Well, okay, but where it says new draft edition?
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only piece that's new.
Right, but why couldn't we have this, like, attached to the agenda?
It should have been.
It should have been, yeah.
It's not, so I'm sitting here and I'm like...
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
It's confusing. I think that one was put to us in...
Here, guys.
Oh, I see it. Yeah, that's...
But some of you have it?
Yeah, some have it. I have it, and Rochelle has it.
I have it.
Mrs. Marcus, send it.
Okay, so I will put the two together, the approval of the first reading of board policy five one one point one and five one one seven. I make a motion for the first approval of the reading. We will finish it next time.
But with the re-verification addition...
Yeah, because come back to us with the approved...
The final draft.
Yep, yep. I'm looking now. It's on there, so I don't know why.
This one is on there?
Yes.
I don't upload. I don't know.
Which one are you talking about?
Twelve A fifty-one eleven point one, district residency. It's the last page, but it's...
So, okay, so that's on there as well as these as well, or these reformer? This is the one with the red line?
So...
That's for beginner districts.
That's a different...yeah, that's...
That's the next one.
Yeah, that's the next, that's fifty-one seventeen.
Okay.
I was wondering if we could have fifty-one seventeen printed out with, to us in a different, so that the red, what's crossed out and what's in red can be crossed out, and what's in red can be included.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Make it easier to read.
Like this?
Yeah, I don't have...I am looking at the online.
The one with the red lines.
Okay. Yeah, that's also on the agenda.
Oh, this is what I do...I want to see it without all of this. I would like to see it...
You want to see it absorbed?
I would like to be, so that you don't see this deleted and then that forward including, and this is indented and all of that. There's a way that it could be done and then...
Well, the board has asked for that, so that they could see what was being changed from the previous one.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that...
I think it's the formatting, is what you're saying.
I would like to see it formatted with the change and not with what was there before.
Oh, I can give you that after you approve them.
Thank you.
Yes. But I need to show you what I'm proposing to change at this time.
Yeah, we approve that one and we're going to this one now.
Part of it is just simply, and how difficult it is.
My second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, approval of the first reading. I would like to move for the approval and pass the first reading and just go on to the approval of the policy unless there's any questions. Is there any questions on that one?
No.
Are you talking about fifty-one seventeen?
No, I'm talking about fifty-one thirty-one point three, which is bikes. Bikes, e-bikes.
We skipped seventy-one.
E-vehicle safety.
I'm sorry, are we voting? What was your question?
We just, we're going to go to the next reading. Approve the first reading on fifty-one seventeen.
Okay.
Now we're going on to...
Oh, no. For fifty-one seventeen, I have some comments.
Can you send...well, you can send these to, send these to Dr. Brighi.
Well, the, in my opinion, the problem with fifty-one seventeen is that it is the grandparent permit resolution, which needs to be a whole standalone item, right?
Additionally, with enrollment opening, there, I need some clarification and direction from the board on grandparent permits, whether or not we're offering them, school-to-school transfer permits, whether or not we're offering them for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, based on the discussion and the directive that we had earlier this year, where everyone was placed at their school of residence.
Yeah.
And with enrollment opening and people wanting to apply for transfers, I need to, in permits, I need to know what we are and are not offering.
Can I, I think I can summarize the grandparent permit that we talked about. That was the one that...
We did, we did pass, the board did pass a part back in November.
Only limited with whatever, and only at Horace Man schools, I think.
Right. What it said is, beginning in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, elementary grandparent permits will only be offered at Horace Man Elementary School and in grades six through twelve.
I mean, I disagree with this.
I disagree with that. I...
So that's the current policy.
The grandparent permit should start from TK or pre-K or whenever we start.
Well, my suggestion, so, okay, when we started with the grandparent permit, which was before my time, the intention of the grandparent permit was to create a more robust student population at the high school.
Middle school, too.
And I guess at the middle school, according to Mrs. Marcus. Then we saw that, no, there are actually not that many applicants at the middle school and high school level. People want to bring their babies when they're younger, which is very understandable.
Yep.
So, so the board prior to when I started, started with the grandparent permit. Then we learned, as we had some grandparent permit students, we learned that as the class size would increase in the older years, we were having to then add additional teachers because when, whereas in the younger years, it didn't have an impact. It was rolling up, and now we have had to add additional teachers to keep the numbers down, or when we have new families coming in, to make room for them so they could be at the school that is near their home. I personally believe that it's not about Hawthorne or El Rodeo or the middle school or the high school. I think that we should have a uniform rule, where especially now with the high school, that we know that we're going to get a ton of people from private coming, now that our high school is going to be beautiful starting this fall. I think we should phase out the grandparent permit and welcome the siblings of pre-existing grandparents' students so that we're keeping families together for this year. That's my opinion.
With existing, just so I understand, so...
Yes, subject to availability.
Right.
But maybe this is something that we need to talk about separately.
What if there, are you saying all siblings, younger and older, or only older?
I think we were talking about siblings who were coming in in TK and K that had an older sibling in like third or fourth grade that our grandparent permit.
I think that should happen regardless, but I also think that we should open up grandparents to TK, because we want the students to start from the beginning, not in the middle.
We've always accepted...
But it's not about that.
It's been open in TK.
Oh, so is it open?
Yeah, it's just subject to availability.
But we just didn't have a lot of space because of resident enrollees.
So let's say, for example, in the way the permit works, please correct me if I'm wrong. Let's say, for example, in TK, in a grade level, there are ten extras, there are ten unused spots. Then, then one-fourth of those ten or more, is it more than ten? I'm sorry.
Ten or more. Spaces above ten.
Yeah, more than ten, if there are more than ten spots, then one-fourth of those spaces would be eligible for TK, for any, any grandparent permit. The mindset being that through the course of the summer, we get residents coming in, and at the end of the day, we don't want to have to add new teachers and pay for additional teachers because we accept a grandparent kid, so we leave that buffer in.
And we also have students who move in throughout the year as well.
Yes.
Which isn't a lot of space. I mean, if you look at more than ten and with a class size of twenty...
Yeah. I mean, maybe the grandparent permit is something that we should table to give everybody a chance to think about it. I don't want to push you guys into a decision.
Well, the point of the matter is that Laura, right now, has to decide when she's got these applications coming in, in the next couple of weeks. I think there's applications starting to open.
Right.
But you still won't know.
I'm not sure.
We need to, we need to let the community know whether or not it's being offered, so they, whether we need to plan on having, because my staff does in-person collection, people bring all their documents, and it's a very involved process. So we need to know whether or not we are engaging in this process for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
But like for TK, I thought we're expecting more TK students this year, one additional class at both schools.
That's the projection.
Because the window for TK is being expanded to, you could turn four up until September one.
Correct.
And so I just want to say to my colleagues, this could have potential financial ramifications. Let's be really sure we want to do this. My position is that it should be offered to the...
Siblings?
The siblings of pre-existing grandparent permit students personally, because we have the high school coming online. We had a ton of new people at El Rodeo. We have TK expanding. We don't have that much, that many classrooms left at both high schools on the ground level. We only have them in the upper level.
Right, there's not a lot of space.
So Judy, you're saying, in other words, going forward, you're saying the next, after the ten spaces that we have that are open. So after those, then a fourth of any remaining would be first priority, you're saying, siblings of existing grandparents of any age.
As a priority.
Subject to availability.
Right.
The grandparent permit would be made available to keep families together.
It's similar to, like, inter-district transfer, where there's a priority, and that would be, you know, existing families would have that priority first.
I think... I agree with that, but I think that if they don't come forward, if the siblings don't come forward, I think that it's, it still should be open to those very young grandparent families for the same premise that we originally conceived of the idea.
So I want to, yes, and I want to just give the board some information to work with. Over the past two years, we have not been able to accept very many elementary-level grandparent permits, because we have not had that available space above ten.
Above the ten.
Particularly in the early grades, TK, K, one and two.
And then families are waiting.
We've gotten a few in fourth and fifth, but it's, but I've had to tell the younger grades no every year, because we just don't have the space.
So you're saying, then, logistically, if we were to have enough space for those who are, you know, not grandparents, but more who live in the area, you're saying some of them are being shut out if there are grandparent kids, permits let in? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm just not able to approve grandparent permits because we're full based on residence enrollment. Yeah.
And then don't forget that people are waiting till August to hear about this, and they're putting their lives on hold.
Right.
I just feel bad, because we went through this whole process just a couple of weeks ago, where our communication and our process made people feel very uncomfortable, and I would hate to do that again to the community.
I'd rather just be clear from the get-go and answer the questions.
I agree. I almost think that we should have a conversation about the initial purpose to begin with, in which was high school. And, because I think it is rough on your department, especially when a sibling doesn't get in and someone's counting on it, and, you know, it gets harder each year that they're more established. But that's certainly something I think that would need further conversation. But it's, you know, going back to the roots of why, because having somebody wait till August, and as you know, this last year...
They got the emails, they were very hurt.
A hundred percent.
It was September, they were still begging, and it was so sad.
Yep, I agree.
So...
I think siblings should have top priority. They should be able to have both kids in the school. We can't close it to a sibling.
So in other words, if there's a grandparent child, and then they have a sibling who is now of age, then they should have...
They should be able to get in the school.
Subject to availability.
Subject to availability, over...
We should keep the siblings together.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Even in the same schools.
So is that, is that the direction?
And it doesn't mean that they're going to be able to go to the same school. Again, it's subject to availability.
Right.
So we might have one at Horace Man, and then one goes to El Rodeo, but then when, but they could move over later on when the class sizes grow.
But can we also have them as priorities so that availability, but the siblings in the same school?
Right. So, the answer, the short answer to your question is yes. That is the other conversation that we need to have regarding school-to-school transfers, because there were previously four conditions that a student could request a transfer. We have kind of moved away from that this year, based on the practice of placing everyone at their school of residence, meaning their school in their neighborhood. So the board could say, you know, we're not going to do, right now, we're not doing transfers, elementary to elementary transfers, based on the policy that was passed in November. However, my question to the board and the direction that I'm asking for is if we are able to make a transfer, a school-to-school transfer, to keep siblings together, may I have that direction?
That's what I would like, yes.
But everyone else goes to their school of residence?
Yes, I think that makes sense, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do think, though, there should be some further conversation. I, it's kind of a PR nightmare, I'm just going to say it, with, you know, like, I I, I think it's very difficult for people to understand the, the requirements. And so, you know, and it's, it's your office and my office where it's like people just don't understand the, these nuances. And then they start, they show up and they, they don't understand that we're, you know, why we can't offer a grandparent permit. And I just, I think it's doing the reverse to.
It's instead of endearing us to the community, I feel that ultimately we're rejecting a lot of families because we don't have the room, they don't meet the criteria. And then they have waited so long and they're deflated and they end up being disappointed in us.
We've got some families who have applied two or three years in a row.
Yeah.
And haven't gotten in just because there has not been any space.
The space.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, we, we get some great kids. But I, I mean, it really takes, um, a, a toll on families. And, um, and also just that we, I feel like we let down a lot of people because it, it's so intricate, the, you know, the, the details of how to get in.
Can I ask you, if we make a deadline for, um, you know, June, that people have to decide if they're coming in August or whenever we start school, otherwise we're going to give their spot to somebody else, then we don't stress families out. Then families will know in June, July at the most.
But the problem is that with that, um, Mrs. Sabag, is that if it's a resident, we have to enroll them.
Right.
So even if I give your spot away and you show up, the second day of school, I have to enroll you.
Absolutely, oh, you mean even though, but what if we don't have?
We have a lot of move-ins that happen.
That's the problem, that's why we have to really wait till it shakes out to see who's actually coming, who actually shows up. And then we can say, okay, we have a little bit of space here. But, but, you know, I can say, I can tell you as a resident, if you don't come, if you don't confirm by July first, we're going to give that spot away, but you can come back August thirteenth and say, but I'm here and enroll me. And we have to.
We have to.
So we have to prioritize the residents first.
That's what we do.
And then if we have room, so the only way we'll know is by August if we have room and these poor families have to wait.
Correct. There's no other way to do it, yeah.
Let's, let's create a finite set so that only a certain group of people have that expectation.
Right.
They know by the way that they have to wait. People that are on the grandparent permit do not get notified. They may enroll in February now, but they will be told. It's, I'm sorry, we can't give you a definite answer right now.
Late July, early August, it's usually around the third or fourth of August that we do it.
Last year you accepted someone, I want to say after school started.
Correct, correct, because then we looked at who didn't show up and we looked at, we had some additional space and we were, we offered it because, um, they had indicated that they would come even after school started.
Do you know how many current, um, students we have that abide with the grandparent rule?
Thirty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
You would think though, it would be two-hundred-and-thirty-seven, it's so much work.
It started off like, in like fifty or sixty, but it's weeded out. And, um, even with the number of applic, we get, but we get many more applications. We probably get over a hundred applications, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Colin Williams, if someone like today says, I want this little cutie pie, I get these pictures, I want this little cutie pie to have a grandparent permit. Basically, the answer is you may apply now, but you will not know the answer until around August. The reason being that, um, by law, it's the residents who, who get offered this, but then you will find out. So it's not, right now, it's not a no for anyone, it's just based, it's subject to availability after the, um, ten spots are left indefinitely.
Right, and, and to my understanding, based on the direction you just gave me, it would also be, do you have a sibling currently attending on a grandparent permit? That's the new update.
So let's say one person applies and the, a second person applies after that person. So you take them in the order received?
Oh, yeah, it's a time stamped document that.
I, I think that should be fair and we should have a concrete policy on that.
I, I almost think that it, it almost becomes like a, like a legacy permit now. Where like, let's look at the thirty-seven that we currently have and if they do have a sibling.
Yep.
But I'd, I would really like to phase this out. I mean, it, with such a small staff, um, and I don't think that people understand and they are, are leaving with a very negative impression. This is not like a, signing up for, you know, like a registration. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, let me go on to item C under Board Policies, Approval of the First Reading of the New Beverly Hills Unified School District Policy, BP number five-one-three-one-point-three, E-Vehicle Use Safety and Education, um, first reading. Uh, do we have a motion for the approval of the first reading?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the vehicles.
Dr. Stern, I'll make the motion for the second, for the, uh, second to the motion. Uh, any questions or comments?
Questions if you have.
No?
Yeah, I, uh, this is a big one, yes, yeah, this is a big one. You know, I really think that we should explore more, um, stakeholder buy-in on this. I've spoken to countless, um, shop owners on South Beverly Drive who are, are absolutely just beside themselves on how many of these e-bikes are, you know, are out there. And they're kind of terrorizing people on South Beverly Drive. And since they've heard about this policy, they've truly think that this is going to just increase people's purchasing powers of buying these e-bikes. Because, you know, a lot of parents that, you know, are going to see this as, well, you know, hey, you know, now they've got transportation to school, so we'll buy these e-bikes, which will put more of them on, um, our streets. I live on Bedford, I cannot tell you how many kids. And, and again, I, I mean, I totally get it, but I can't tell you how many kids have blown through my stop sign at Gregory, uh, you know, and Bedford doing a wheelie, filming themselves, which is pretty cool. And it looks dope on Instagram and, you know, and TikTok. But it, it, it's, you know, getting into the whole thing about especially liability. I mean, I know it says, uh, in this, um, uh, that the district will assume no responsible for loss, theft, or damage. But that, that's not really realistic. I mean, when you have a child that brings, you know, an e-bike to school, if they come on the property, which I know that they're, you know, they're not supposed to outside of the designated parking areas. But, you know, you're going to get someone who, you know, who comes on the property and rips, you know, through grass and possibly crashes into something and God forbid, it's a person, there's going to be liability. You know, I'm, there's no way around that. So I, I just think that this needs to be really, really thought of a lot deeper. Every police officer I've spoken to, and I know Sergeant Fair very well, who's the co-author here, but every law enforcement officer I've spoken to is dreading this. Because they're all saying the same thing, is that this is not about just giving people convenience to come to school. It's about what happens on the way to school and God forbid, what happens on the way home from school. And then of course, just on the weekends. These e-bikes are a bit of a menace. Again, I don't want to take away, you know, anyone's, you know, the right to own one. But I think that, that to promote it, um, I just, I, I'm, I'm just, you know, having a lot of problems with it. You know, uh, you know, I think we need to get more stakeholder buy-in, parents' comments, shop owners, cops, to say, is this the right move to move down as a district-sponsored thing? Because I think that they are causing a lot of problems and it just could come back to bite us badly.
Well, I don't think they're going anywhere soon. So I worry that, I mean, if we, we could sort of legislate it or manage it, or we could just throw our hands up. But it, it feels like to me, they're just coming out of the woodwork all over the place, so I don't know.
I have a question about how did this come about? And, and what I mean by that is going back to the law. Are the, are the e-vehicles not motorized vehicles? They're motorized. So what's the difference between a motorcycle and an e-vehicle?
It, yeah, it's speed power.
Okay, so to me, I, a, a, and so that's my first concern is we're legitimizing, um, people without driver's licenses, minors, not all minors, but fifteen and younger, we're legitimizing their use of a motorized vehicle.
I mean, not all of them are motorized, I mean.
So that's what I'm trying to understand, what they go fast.
It's very difficult to just see it on the surface and understand which one needs a driver's license and, you know, and which one doesn't.
Yes, so that's, so, so to me, that's a, um, it's a key differentiating point. Are these motorcycles or are these scooters? What is the difference, number one? And number two, I'm concerned that we are treating the high schoolers and the middle schoolers the same. And we have middle schoolers that are eleven years old and we have high schoolers that are eighteen years old. And just like with the cell phone policy, we adopted a different cell phone policy for each school. Those are the two, the two questions that I have. So how did this start? Does Mr. Mead want to join us?
I mean, he's, yeah, for sure. I mean, there, there were a lot of people, uh, involved in this from the city to parents.
I'd like to also say something.
I'm so sorry if I jumped over you.
That's okay, no, no, no.
But, but I also want to, before Mr. Mead jumps in, I also want to say that, um, you know, initially, this was just a, so that, you know, it was students that are, are riding and then being on campus with, with it. But it was requested to be a board policy.
Yeah, um, so I've been part of at least some of the conversations around this. I am, if you heard Sergeant Fair a couple of weeks ago, there have been ancillary conversations. So I think citywide, what are we going to do about e-bikes, has been a conversation. There was some urgency last year at Beverly Vista, I think, with a couple of, it weren't many kids, but some individuals who were particularly, uh, daring. I don't think the high school has felt a great deal of urgency. Long story short, I think a lot of the initiative about this has come from our city partners. And the idea is let's partner up and educate kids about the laws, um, talk to them about, you know, acceptable use while near the campus, on the campus. I think they were looking for a partner, you know, um, educational partner. And potentially a little bit of leverage similar to parking permits. Like i, if drivers are behaving a certain way, we can revoke a parking permit if they're coming to school and driving a certain way or, or cars too loud. Similar type of thing here is like, we expect you to come to school in a certain decorum on your, on your bicycle or your e-bike. And, um, they would give us a little bit of leverage to partner with the city. But, um, you know, the Traffic Safety Commission, uh, we have, uh, four meetings a year. This has come up since last year and obviously with BHPD as well.
But would it be better if we said, no, thank you, leave your motorcycles at home?
I was thinking about that.
So.
When Mr. Stewart was stating his concerns, I, I, they, yeah, they would have to theoretically park them off campus and I don't think they'd want to do that, you know, like that type of scenario.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, um, I have been fighting this argument with, with my child. And they've been riding those e-bikes since ten years old, eleven, twelve years old. This gives them a way to do it. This allows them to do it. The reason I'm saying that is because, yes, you have rules. They're going to come to me and say, Mom, sign this, do this, do that. Now I can ride it, because look, my friends are riding it. It's extremely dangerous. I, I allow my kids to do a lot of things, but this is life-threatening. It scares the heck out of me. I, I don't want my child riding one of these bikes, even though all their friends are, which I can't understand. I can't comprehend, ever, to each its own, but a parent allowing their child to do this, it scares the heck out of me.
So are, are you suggesting that we have a policy where you cannot ride?
Well, I think BHPD, because I remember when they spoke, they said, okay, you need a license. It can't go over a certain amount of, um, miles per hour, or they stop the kids. And some parents were like, well, stop our kids, chase them. And they're like, well, do you really want us to chase your child? Now they're in more danger and something else can happen to them because they both go different directions. And it's really difficult. And I've been one of those parents that go after these kids and watch what they're doing. I'm, I'm very involved and my child acts like they don't see me and they pass by me.
And if you know.
But I, I watch everything.
And if you know how people drive in the Southwest.
Yeah, well.
I even had a BHPD officer that texted me this morning because I constantly complain saying at my corner, at, yeah, at Bedford and Gregory, no one stops. They go through that stop sign at fifty miles an hour every morning. And he texted me just to let me know, hey, we got one. Right. So.
So my point is.
The odds of someone getting direly hurt is going to increase when we are promoting.
Before the e-bikes, the children at BV went to Beverly Drive, causing havoc over there.
Right.
Now the e-bikes, they're all over the place, you can't stop them. So now, rules and regulations are great for adults, are great for high school students. Middle schoolers, elementaries are going to start riding it. Where, where do we stop? I mean, we're actually telling them, you can do it if you're responsible, but are they responsible?
And even if they are, it's still dangerous.
It's very, and even if they are, there was a, a mother that spoke that her daughter was an honor student and everything. She just got on the scooter and she died on a scooter. And, yes. So I don't want the responsibility of signing this off and saying, okay, because you signed this off, something happened to a child.
So can we just go back just for my own clarification? So are we, because it was requested that the, a board policy be made around the e-bikes and there isn't another school district that has it, so we created one. It's, are, are we suggesting that, that you cannot ride an e-bike to school?
Well, Dr. Bregge, vehicle, this is what the policy says. Vehicle code twenty-one-two-sixty. I, I view vehicle codes for sixteen and over, right? governs the operation of bicycles, e-scooters and other personal transportation devices on public roadways and pathways. So I, I don't know if these students are lawfully using these vehicles, but I, I pers.
I mean, some, some are very responsible.
Speed limit according to age and the power of the bike. And there is some delineation on which one these kids can use and have registered and have, uh, have a license to use and so on. So I, I see the, the importance of what you are all saying is that I don't want to approve this policy. I just don't want the kids to ride their bikes, e-bikes, et cetera.
Do it on the weekend.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that I personally, I'm fearful, fearful that we're going to have one child that's going to get hurt somewhere around our school on this e-bike and then we, then we'll, we'll do something about it. Maybe we should do something about it now. But I, I, uh, that, I personally am not in favor of the kids taking e-bikes to school at all, so it's.
Well, I think it should be, um, Beverly Hills Police Department responsibility. They should put out the laws, they should make the license and we should keep our hands off of that because that's a parent's choice.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I don't think we should ban it as a district, but I don't, I think that it should be over the purview of the, of the police department.
But are we allowing them to park it on our campus?
That's the question.
Well, I think we should allow them to park it. The reason I'm saying, yeah, the reason I'm saying is because some parents, maybe it's great for them. They want their kids to go to school, be independent, and this is a great way for them to get there faster. They trust their child, my hat's off to them, that's fantastic. I just don't want to take it upon me personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else, that it's my decision to, to allow them to do this. I think the parents, it should be their responsibility, their decision, and the police department for regulating it. And this, they can park it just like they park a scooter and a bike and everything else.
Yeah, and, so again, this was only brought because it was requested to be a board policy. We were not going to be putting it in a board policy.
Who requested it?
No, it was by board members up here.
I did.
This board.
If we vote to no on this, it will not be a policy and we can then take.
No, but who brought it up?
It was just given to the, uh, the.
I think BHPD.
I recall, Dr. Bregge, um, there were two dirt bikes that were impounded. They were taken at the high school. Do you remember, Mr. Mead?
Yeah, it's fairly recently. Um, there are classifications of these and some kids without a license are not allowed to ride.
Yes, so then I remember seeing that and connecting with you and messaging you about it. And then this somehow became an offshoot of that. So maybe we want to table it for a moment and.
Yes.
I mean, to be clear, we didn't want to have to write a policy.
So you thought you were serving us.
Yes.
But we thought there was an outside force that you were trying to partner with, so.
Well, it was written by, I think, pretty much by, uh, people from the outside too.
Yeah, I mean, the, the partnership was more like just with the, uh, with the, with the PD so that parents, uh, had a better understanding of, um, you know, what type of bike it is. Because they were buying bikes that were, uh, too powerful and so.
We should educate, if we can have classes.
But we still have a question about if students are riding, driving e-vehicles, are we going to allow them to park on our campuses? I think that's the.
That's an interesting question because.
I have no problem with that unless there's some sort of implication I don't know about.
Well, the one implication I would say worth considering is if we allow them to park on campus, we have been concerned with, when a kid shows up without a helmet.
Sure.
Yeah.
For example, so, you know, so there are certain things I think that we would want to consider as an expectation if we allow them to park.
What if we do, if they have a permit and they have whatever necessities they need with BHPD? They need to go there, they need to apply, their parents need to apply. And then they can park it on campus showing their permit.
Yeah, but the city's not going to do a permit.
No, they have a sticker on the bike. The, the city is going to, yeah, the city is making a license. They already said they will.
Oh, they did?
But I recall you saying the PTAs were working on this. What was happening from the PTA perspective?
The, the PTA, they were just, it was more of the education piece. They just wanted parents to know, um, you know, this is, because they see what's happening in the community and they see. I mean, if it isn't going to be, you know, Monday through Friday, it's going to be after school and weekends and, you know, it's, because it's, it's.
And if I may, the conversations have frequently revolved around the opportunity schools have to educate the kids, right? Like regardless of this policy, I heard someone say it, that is still an option, you know, with or without a board policy.
Like my question to my colleagues is, do we want to, let's just talk about the middle school first. Do we want to ban e-vehicles from the middle school?
You mean coming on the property?
Yes, so if you can't park them, you're not going to bring them.
The moment you allow someone to park anything on the property, we're taking responsibility for their property.
Exactly. And we're legitimizing it.
I mean, I'm sorry, but, but once you come on the property and you've got, you know, uneven pavement and grass and other kids and one person's going to come on at thirty-five miles an hour, you know, thinking that they're cool and they're going to crash.
They're just parking it, like they're riding it to school. They're riding it to school.
No, but you have to get it on to the property somehow. One kid is going to ride it on to the.
They have to walk it in.
Yeah, well, but that's not a policy here. Someone's going to ride it on, I mean, it, it's going to happen.
I, I literally see what they do. They all go to school, they come to school, they stop, they walk it in, they have to show their IDs to get in. This is BV.
I would agree, for the most part, our kids are pretty good about it.
They're good about it.
We have guards out in front.
I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about the drivers, I'm worried about the safety.
It only takes, yeah.
But, but I'm also not worried about most of them, I'm worried about the one of them.
I hear you.
There are some that, yeah.
Just takes one to make it all better.
Yeah, I think we should, right, I think, should we table this then or we should?
Can I make a, a suggestion, everybody?
Yes.
Why don't we vote, uh, either reject the approval of the first reading, which we can do, or then make a motion to, uh, adopt a new policy, uh, which meets our needs about the e-bikes more.
Should we all withdraw our motions, whoever made a motion or is second?
Well, we can vote it down.
You can just vote it down.
I'll call for the motion, all those, uh, to approve the first reading, I'm going to do a roll call. I'll call for the motion, all those, to approve the first reading. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Stewart?
I personally would like to table this.
Yeah, I would just want to table it.
I feel like I haven't talked to enough people about it. I'm not understanding the origin. And instead of, then the papers are going to cover that we voted no, but I feel like I'm not informed enough. Do you all mind if we pause?
Well, you have to withdraw. I mean, Amanda, will you withdraw your motion?
I do, I withdraw my
Could we do a survey with the parents?
Okay.
So we are going to table this.
Just how many parents are in favor of their e-bikes and would like it to be parked at the school? And how many are not in favor? Because some parents, just it's harder when another parent says yes, and then you have to say no to your child.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Alright, we're going to come back with another policy then on that, Dr. Braggie.
Well, I'm, for sake of the clarity, though, what is, like, because I want to make sure that we bring you back, you know, what you want, so
To be continued.
And that's fine. We don't have to, we don't
No, I don't want it to continue. I think Dr. Braggie is asking what kind of a policy would we like to bring back?
Well, we need to talk about, oh, think about that.
Further discussion is what I'm hearing.
Yes, further discussion. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Dr. Stern, you have a finance committee board appointment, I believe? Doesn't require anything on our part.
Right. I just wanted to share a little details about this appointee, if I could. Let's see. So the, the finance committee is great in advising the district and trying to weigh in on different ideas and projects that affect us and keep us financially solvent. And one gentleman who has been a resident of Beverly Hills since 1979, his name is Peter Ostrov. He was for six years on the Beverly Hills Planning Commission. He was the chair during COVID. He was the chair of the BHUSD 7 to 11 Surplus Property Committee, co-chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Cities Climate Action Adaptation Committee. He's now columnist for Beverly Hills Weekly. He is on the Board of Directors for Beverly Hills Conferences and Visitors Bureau, and he does a lot of other things. His children went to BHUSD schools, and I think that he would be a wonderful asset. He has agreed to this. So I just wanted to share, Peter Ostrov.
Thank you. And that is now our new member of the Finance Committee, Peter Ostrov.
And the next meeting is what, February 20th, I believe?
Okay, okay.
Can I ask a question?
The next item is the discussion.
I think, I think
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
I mean, I know Peter very well. He's a, you know, highly qualified gentleman. Just the, would he be required to sign a waiver since he does write for one of our local papers? And then he will be getting inside data on certain things? Is there like any conflict there? I mean, I definitely want him in the role, but just is there any kind of documentation?
It's a good question. They're public meetings, so everything that is provided to him is a public document, but
Right, so there's nothing private that would be shared that he couldn't share in a column? But that's something that can be pointed out. I'm sure he'd understand that potential conflict of interest.
Yeah, I mean
But I mean, I welcome him wholeheartedly, just you made the comment that he, you know, he writes for a paper, so I wanted to make that comment.
Right, and, and, and once in a while, we will have a reporter that comes to those meetings, so.
Okay, any other comments? Alright, moving along, the discussion for retention of independent legal counsel for the Board of Education in addition to in-house versus external representation. This has been brought to me by a couple of the board members that they would like to take the initiative. Mr. Stewart, I believe you were
Sorry? Oh, sorry, which, what are we on right now?
On round B, retention of independent legal counsel.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that we definitely need independent legal representation for the board to handle board-specific matters that are more internal for the board itself, as opposed to the representation that we have from the district as a whole.
Anybody else along the way have a comment on that?
Yeah, I would like to see that we retain independent counsel. And one of, either you or Judy
I would be more than happy to do it since I have a legal background.
I think with new board members, and I think with everything that's going on, we need independent counsel.
Okay, Dr. Stern, any comment?
So you're saying an additional third party to weigh in on educational matters related to the board? Or just general, what sort of legal matters are you?
To the board.
Like Brown Act things or?
Or any legal counsel that we need in addition, you know, to what we have. We need in-house.
And by in-house, are you thinking
Independent.
Not salary?
Not in-house, sorry. Independent, yes.
I would like to step in front of, I know that this was a subject that Mrs. Manicherry brought up. And so I would like to ask, with your permission, everybody, that she has to look for some of the people that might, she knows the community, the legal community, and have her investigate and bring back to us some possibilities, if that's possible.
It was on.
It was on.
It just was too far.
Oh, too far. Thank you.
So for clarity, then somebody that is on staff, so to speak, where they are coming to work every day?
No.
Contractor.
Yeah, no.
Because, because we do have independent general counsel, so I'm trying to understand the difference.
I think that we need an independent legal advisor who answers to the board. I just feel like we have a lot going on in this district, and as a board, I think it would be good for us to, you know, go out, determine, one of us can determine if it's me that you want me to do it, having a legal background. But I'd like us to have counsel on matters that we deem are advisable. And so I would, if, if we're, it feels like we're all on the same page. And so what I would ask is for the board to authorize me to determine such advisability of when it would be a good idea to have that counsel, and to initiate the selection process, and to engage, you know, directly with them, and then I can come back to the board for your approval.
I would authorize Judy Manicherry to, to look for independent legal counsel.
Okay, any questions on that?
Nope.
Comments? Judy, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Item C, discussion item about TB testing and volunteers.
Do we need to all take a vote for that?
No.
Or is the instruction enough?
That was, there's no vote on it. It just talks about appointing. We've discussed it in
So we're, we're clear, it was the few items that I stated?
Yep.
Thank you.
All clear.
Supposedly, there was a recent inquiry about There was a recent inquiry about TB testing and volunteers and so on. And I know that there's maybe some discretion or not discriminate, feel like they may be discriminated against by the fact that if they're going to volunteer in the kitchen or volunteer in something, what are the requirements? And we do have very definite state mandated TB testing programs that are in place for people who come in contact with the kids, either in the food department or in the classroom, or as IAs and so on. I remember as a teacher that I had to go every three or, I think, three years and be TB tested, or else get a chest x-ray. I know that people who work in the cafeteria, they come in contact with food, et cetera, they have to be tested. I know the IAs have to be tested. I believe even people who work at the school as custodians and people who work in, anyone that comes into contact with kids in a normal routine way, day after day, and so on. The question came up about people who volunteer occasionally. And so I've asked Dr. Braggie to, or we can look in the policy, there is a policy by the State Board of Education or the Health Department on tubercular testing. So I think that it's required. Let's say that a parent comes for a party to the classroom, and they're going to serve, that doesn't count. That's not a regular volunteer. But there are people that are required, that if they're going to be doing it on a permanent type of, even on a volunteer, once a week, once a month, I think that they will be required to have a TB test, so.
So what was the issue with it?
So I actually raised this issue because I, I understand that there are some parents who have been volunteering to help with food service in the cafeteria. And recently, they've been expected or required to go through a, and please correct me if I'm wrong, a criminal background check as well as a TB test. I don't per se have an issue with regulating who's coming and going. I just want to make sure that these rules are uniformly applied. So then I went back to, to the law, Regulation 1240. And it actually speaks to food services. It's really robust in, in talking about this. So we have parents who come on site for a variety of reasons, and we love it. And it actually was in our strategic plan, I think, the prior year, to post-COVID, bring parents back onto campus so they can speak to us, they can visit with us, they can see how wonderful things are on campus instead of, you know, every once in a while, hearing that there's an issue. Insofar as the food service assistance goes, I read in 5148.2, sorry, that's before and after school programs. So back, so 4212.5, criminal background check, student activity programs, well, I'll jump. "The requirement shall not apply to volunteer supervisors for breakfast, lunch, or nutritional periods, or to volunteer non-teaching aides under the immediate supervision and direction of certificated personnel pursuant to ED Code 35021, including parents/guardians volunteering in a classroom or on, excuse me, field trip, or community members providing non-instructional services." So the way I'm reading this is that by requiring the parents who are coming in to assist with food service, we are not consistent with this regulation.
So you're saying the regulation states that they do need
No, the regulation states that there is an, there is an exception
Oh, an exception.
for volunteer parents.
Okay.
Then, on the next page, 4112.4, health examination, so this would speak to the TB test. "The superintendent or designee may exempt from TB testing requirements those volunteers who serve less than a school year and whose functions do not require frequent or prolonged contact with the students." So on the basis of the two clauses which I just read to us, I would say that the parents who are volunteering for food services should not be subject to a background check or TB testing unless we're doing it for room parents, book fairs, field trips, reading to the class, coming in for birthdays, helping with theater, et cetera, et cetera. So do we, does anybody have a question or disagree with what I've just stated?
So my understanding is that they don't need to be checked if they're temporary, less than a year, they're voluntary. They're basically not a teacher.
Yeah, it just, I mean, clear as day.
Or an age.
This requirement shall not apply to volunteer supervisors for breakfast, lunch, or other nutritional periods, or to volunteer non-teaching aides, et cetera. And then the same thing goes for TB testing. If this board wants to go in another direction, let's discuss it and let's uniformly apply the other direction to all parents.
These are ED Codes, I recall.
Yeah, it's ED Code, so, so that's true. We can't even change it.
Yeah.
So we actually don't even have the authority to require it.
It shouldn't have been implemented in the first place.
Based on what I'm reading, you are correct. Dr. Braggie, are you reading it in a different way?
No, no, I think it needs to be uniformly applied.
So, but we're, we're, we are not uniformly applying it. We're going to uniformly accept it out, right? We're going to uniformly apply the exception to all parents.
Yeah, right.
Right, now, the operative word is parents because rarely
Parents and guardians.
Right, okay, fine, because
So maybe that's a grandparent.
No, right, rarely, if there were some, shall we say, bad actor who was not related to anyone who wanted to come on
They wouldn't be
Right, okay.
They would not be allowed on campus.
No, this clearly says people who are related to, in some capacity.
Do you think anybody on your staff would disagree with my interpretation of these regulations?
I will ask them.
We all need a cup of coffee, Dr. Braggie. It's not just you.
Thank you. I didn't think I was going to get stuck there. I, I'm a firm believer, we can, if we have a uniform standard across, and again, totally get the ED Code. And I would argue, though, we have a minimum standard, and we can go above and beyond. If we're going to have adults, volunteers, that are going to be, again, a little subjective on how often, but if they're going to be around children, I'm always going to push to go to the higher standard and make sure they have live scans, and the same thing, I mean, all our coaches get this. I don't need the clapping.
We're talking about parents, though.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
We're not talking about staff members or teachers, parents.
We try to, and again, I'm just going to speak
So, so that's fine. If we want to do that, then that would mean, first of all, it goes against this. So we would, so I don't really know how it would work out, because here we're being told we can't require this.
Well, I'd have to read it. I need to go over more, but if it's saying with the exception of, that means we are able to accept it. So I'd have to find out if we're able to accept it or if we're able to, you know, implement it. So there's, I'd have to know.
Right, and that doesn't mention live scan and fingerprinting, does it? Because live scan is fingerprinting, and what it shows is that, hey, does this person have a record of some sort?
I, I want to keep our students and our staff safe. I don't have a problem with requiring a higher standard if that's what my colleagues vote to do. I just want to make sure that it is uniformly applied.
I agree.
And, and we have a clear and concise plan, criteria, and communication about it that is district-wide. Or that we have one for elementary, one for middle, and one for high school.
And that's our intent. I want to make sure that's our intent. And I would also argue, you know, with just flu season, you know, COVID, all these other things, TB assessments, I do believe, you know, if we can, we should have, you know, the people that are interacting with our students should have those in place. And the other piece, we want to do serve safe as well, because if there is any chance they're going to touch food, they should be trained on how to deal with that. Now, again, none of this may not be statutorily required, but it's good to have that standard.
Okay, so if, if there is something that you're intending to implement or you're recommending, I think that before it gets implemented, it should come for the, to the board, because it's going, and you've got to figure it out how to harmonize it with these policies.
Understood.
On the face of it, what you're suggesting is not in harmony.
Understood.
Okay.
This was written, by the way, it's this policy, this regulation is, goes back to April of 2011. Perhaps we should look at it and make sure that it's clear exactly what, because I think the way it's written here, although we can't redo, if it's a state education code, we cannot change it. But we can make it much more clear as to what it really is intended to do. Without, and so it's uniform, the way we
Yeah, it is really a bunch, it's ED Code after ED Code after ED Code, and it doesn't read
No, that's what I'm saying. It needs to be more clearly
But the exception for the background check is not one that we have a choice about. It is the law. The requirement shall not apply to volunteers.
So I just want to be clear. These are volunteers, which are PTA members. It's parents coming on campus just for like a half an hour, helping out. I personally want volunteers. I personally want to be transparent. I want the parents to feel comfortable to help if they want to help, you know, and, and to, and it's not, it's not regulated as a law. This is a huge obstacle. To do a live scan, they're not a professional, that they're coming to work all day. They're not working. They're just coming for a short period.
There's a cost for live scan, and it's intrusive. They take your finger, you know.
If you want to, if you're worried about communicable diseases, then maybe we can implement something uniform, like no more than once per month or something like that. But again, it's not something that comes in through the back door. It needs to come to the board, please.
Understood.
Am I, are we all on the same page?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll just say one thing. I'm not a health professional, but I will say that I feel like there's two different categories here. The TB testing, I feel like with a screener or questions could probably be managed because it is, my understanding is it's relatively rare, and there are certain questions that indicate if you are even at risk to have, to ask volunteers to go and be picked with an allergen and have that bubble. I think, I don't know, I would not want that.
That's why the law does not call for it.
Right, I would not be for that.
Yeah, okay.
Myself.
Thank you, Dr. Stern, I appreciate it.
All right, we need to elect a representative to the Los Angeles County Committee for School District Organization, which is held in October and November. And I believe when we were doing this on December, we did not decide who would like to do it. And we may need to still have somebody be a representative to the LA County. I would be willing to do it, but if it's at night, no. So I would have that problem. I don't know when it's being held, I can find out. But does anybody know when that meeting is going to be held?
So I think that there's, part of this is missing on here, isn't it? So for the election? Oh, this is different.
We just need a, we need.
Oh, then this is the group that it doesn't meet very often. Sometimes it doesn't meet at all during the year. It has to do with the district. It's when districts are looking to either, you know, be adjacent to each, just split.
Yeah.
So it's like redistricting within a district. So it doesn't happen very often, but so.
Well, you'll let me know if there is one, and we'll take care of it.
Yeah, because I could let you know as president.
Okay.
Would you like me to be your alternate, Mrs. Marcus?
Well, if there's, if they ask for, if it's any distance to go, I would like someone to go with me then. So maybe we can.
We could play it by ear. I could go also, we could, you know, it depends when.
Yeah, I'll just, when we're notified. Oftentimes, these will cancel. They're scheduled several times a year, but I'll let you know. And sometimes it's by Zoom, otherwise it's traveling across LA County.
Okay. I need an approval for the board meeting dates for February 2025, this month through June. There's a, if you'll notice, you received a notice that we changed. We crossed out April 22nd because there would be a month without meetings. We've checked the calendars. It is possible for us to have meetings on April 15th, which will not interfere with Passover or the vacation, and April 29th. So I would like a motion to approve the change of the calendar for January 2024 through June 2025. We're already in the middle of it, but I just need a motion to adopt, change those dates, adding April 15th and the 29th, and deleting April 22nd. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, Mrs. Marcus.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Okay, a call for the question, any queer comment on that? No, I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And now you also have in front of you a calendar for July 2025 through June 2026, next year. And the only thing I would like to point out on this is that there was one situation where we were going to have October, and that is influenced by several things that are occurring. And we tried to switch that around, but it wasn't possible because it's the holidays and so on. So if we do need to have a meeting, we will call a special meeting. But at the present, we only have one meeting in October. All the rest of the meetings, generally speaking, as you check through, are for the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. So I'd like a motion to approve. And of course, it can always be changed if something happens. Can I get a motion?
Actually, Mrs. Marcus, yeah. I wanted to ask if we can talk about the summer months because I know that our staff and we would like to be able to take a three-week off period or something like that in July, once the summer programming is over and it's the Fourth of July weekend and et cetera. On the other hand, I feel like we have competing interests because Dr. Horvath and Dr. Seaman and so on are trying to onboard new staff, and they need to get paid, and they need for their insurance to be provided for. And I feel like we handcuff you folks from doing the best for us when we're not meeting and approving. So I was thinking.
Well.
Maybe we need to delete July 8th. And then the next one will be July 22nd, and we have another one, we add an August 5th. It is a little much at the beginning of the school year, but at least then our team can operate function higher, get people insured.
I just want to verify, it's not possible to have a virtual meeting, right? It's no longer lawful to have. Okay, right, even if all of us uniformly, okay.
What I'm thinking is that we would cancel July 8th. So the prior ones would be June 10th, May 13th, May 27th, June 10th, June 24th.
Well, those are part of the previous year.
Yes, just to give you context.
Yeah, I understand.
And then we would delete July 8th. So that means we would have technically one month off between June 24th and July 22nd.
Yep.
And then add in an August 5th. Or turn August 12th into August 5th. I don't know, what do you think?
I would suggest that.
To do two back-to-back weeks?
I wouldn't do two back-to-back because we wouldn't have enough, you know, by the time people turn things in, they would have to turn that in by the 6th.
What is the opening day of school?
I believe it is the.
The opening day of school is August?
I think it's the, I think it's the 12th, I think it's.
The 12th, so I'm going to just check my calendar.
I would suggest we have a meeting the week before then.
I would agree.
I think we should have a meeting. Meeting on the 5th of August rather than waiting till, because if there's school business that, I mean.
I also like the idea of having that extra July time because people are gone. And we've had people missing before, so that makes sense, plan around it.
But then we hit August 5th.
I think that that's fine.
The alternative would be.
How about August 19th and 5th and 19th that way instead? Do 5th and the 19th.
Well, the first question is, so we're going to delete July 8th.
Right.
And we want to keep July 22nd where it is.
Right.
Is that right?
I think so.
Okay, so. June is from the prior.
June is the previous month.
Yeah.
I would lower August.
August 5th?
5th and August 19th.
Well, August 19th, I can't. Well, if we're meeting, if we're meeting July 22nd.
We should be fine with August 12th and 26th.
Yeah.
August 5th and the 26th?
Right, because that gives us our, that would be our regular rotation anyways.
Well, we have three weeks in between then on the one, between August 5th and the 26th.
Right, I think that's fine.
So not August 12th? No, that's, so then we're going to do July 24th.
No, July 4th.
July 24th.
No, July 22nd.
Right, so the last one would be June 24th.
Right.
We will skip July 8th, and we will meet July 22nd.
Right, and then we will do August 5th and August 26th.
No, so we'll keep those the same, Dr. Bregge?
Keep, I would suggest keeping the 12th and the 26th.
Okay.
Keep it?
Because our board policy is really the second and fourth week, so.
Well, but sometimes we have to adapt a little bit.
Right.
So it would be July 22nd, August 12th, August, yeah.
I, my suggestion would be.
They say go back to the 12th and 26th, I have no.
What about doing July 22nd, August 5th, and August 26th?
Well, that's what I suggested, but they might.
Because there's a lot of commotion and motion in the week leading up to the start of school. And wouldn't you guys rather not have a meeting on the first week of school?
Well, yeah, that would be great.
It would be better to have it the prior week.
Yep.
They're getting ready for all sorts of things, maybe it would be better that way.
Or we could do July 29th instead of the 22nd. I'm okay with that.
That means we go all the way from June 28th to the July 29th. No, I'm not, I think that's too long.
That's a pretty long time.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Okay. June 24th, July 22nd, August 5th, and August 26th.
Are we going to go with August 5th then?
Yeah, we can do, we can do that. So we would go.
August 5th, 8, 5, and then 26.
Right, so that we pull it from the first week of school.
Yeah.
What's the first day of school?
Is that week of the 11th.
12th, so it's better to not have a meeting that day?
It is.
Okay.
And people are hired by then, so it's.
Okay, just for clarification, everybody. Starting the year of July 25, 26th, our first meeting will be July 22nd. Then it will be August 5th, and then August 26th. And then the rest of the calendar remains as is, okay?
Good idea.
But then I'm assuming in October, we're short one meeting because of holidays.
Yes, we looked.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the calendar. May I have a motion?
I'll motion.
You going to make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I move to.
Remy is making the motion? Yes.
I second your motion, Remy.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, all in the favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, that brings us now to the board comments and then to public comment. And I would like to explain the moving the agenda tonight. I'm so grateful that many of you waited around to speak. But as you see, last meeting, we were unable to get to the important business school because of the public comment, and I did not want that to happen again tonight. So I am now going to have board comments, and then we will have public comment. And I hope it doesn't have to be, this is not something that will happen every month or every meeting. I only did it because I have another stack of comments today. I would like to make one comment. If somebody is being seated time, I will call the person who is seating the time to see if they have seated it, because I will call on them. If they are not here to say they seated the time, the person they were going to give it to, or whoever got it, will only get three minutes. And so I want to make that abundantly clear right now. One person only can seat, but if I say, Joe Smith, are you seating your time? And Joe Smith is not here, the person he was seating to or who they asked for will not get double time. Is that clear? Thank you. I don't want anybody with arguments about that. And so I would like to make a little statement myself that I feel that I need to make. For the last several months, we as board have been inundated with public commentary, and I have personally received countless communications, both emails and telephone calls, all with an outpouring of personal regard, respect, and admiration that students, both current, former, parents, and other community members have all made for Mr. Romeo Carey. My own children never had Mr. Carey, as they had graduated from the high school well before his arrival. But I do know, as I sit here tonight, and as we hear again from many of you who have been so patiently waiting, and I thank you, what Mr. Carey has meant to you and the impact he has made to the hundreds, if not thousands of students that have come through our KBEV programming and affiliated steward or students, studios over the last two decades. With that in mind. With that in mind, I think the time has come for a decision to be made with the guiding principles that no one is perfect. And this community deserves to know whatever the results are of the apparent, still ongoing investigation with the understanding that Mr. Carey, like every single teacher and educator in this district, has to follow the rules. I want this community to know that I am pleased that this matter, which is as far as I'm concerned, has now exceeded a reasonable period of time for a full investigation to be made, has clearly disrupted what I have stated publicly is my primary goal for our students, to provide the best education possible for every student in our district. Thank you. Okay. Remy, are you ready to go? You have a board comment?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
I have no comments because I would love to hear what y'all have to say.
I have a comment. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening. I appreciate every voice. We hear every voice, and we respect every voice. And I just want the community to know that we are listening and reading, and we thank you for being involved with your students and with our community and with our district. Thank you.
I'd like to say something. I've had this on my social media because it's important to me as well. With Black American History Month, first of all, I do feel like in general, we need to have more than a month when we talk about certain groups and, you know, such as LGBT or whatever. Like, why is it that there's a month confined to a certain group? Definitely, you know, more longstanding respect should be, should happen. But a friend of mine, a friend of mine's godparent lost their home in Altadena. And he was, he was telling me all about the history of Altadena, and it really, it got me sort of teared up, and I thought about what a special place that is. A lot of us have spoken, I mean, of course, anyone impacted by the fires, it's horrific. It's horrific all around. But when I think about what was relayed to me about Altadena and that many African Americans had their first homeownership there, and I think that it is incredibly special. And I guess I'm extra saddened by hearing about a lot of the loss that went on there. And I know that there's been a lot of outreach, and there's been donations to the Palisades, but I also want to say that there's a lot of people who are really hurting in that community, and it's a very special place, and I just hope that it will be able to be rebuilt to its grandeur. Thank you.
Uh, Cherry?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, well, I would like to start the open comment now, and I will call you to the microphone. I'm going to go with the people who I were here for a long time that I remembered. I'm going to call on Michael Higginbotham. Is Michael Higginbotham here? Well, but I, according to the new, we announced this last week, I will call on you, you're Victoria? Okay, well, I can give you three minutes, I'm sorry. What? Please come forward, I can't hear you. I read this, this is some new policy that we are, it is by the rules of CSBEA.
Okay, so because we weren't aware of that said rule, somebody else is seating her time to me.
Who is seating her time? Your name, please. Uh, what's your?
Tatum Williams, she's not on the list.
You're not on the list.
What was the name?
What was the name, Tada? Tatum, okay, you're seating your time, Tatum?
Yes.
Okay, fine, thank you. Okay, I'm, thank you very much. Okay, Victoria, thank you.
First and foremost, Happy Black History Month. Black history is American history. Despite the fact that many families within this district would rather pick up the bad habit of calling black students and teachers the N-word instead of picking up a book to educate themselves of the many privileges and freedoms that they have as a direct result of the resilience, ingenuity, and existence of black people and black culture. Nonetheless, I still say to you all, Happy Black History Month. I'm here today because the board has still failed to take accountability for and publicly address the blatant racism that exists within this district. I don't know what hurts more, the fact that in 2025, we still have to come before this board and district that's predominantly a marginalized community and have to ask said marginalized community for the same compassion, acceptance, and support that this very community has publicly asked of us and others time and time again. Or if it hurts more because the fact that if it were not for the inclusion, compassion, and alliance with the black community, many of you who sit on this board and in this district would have to answer through the back doors, sit at the back of buses, and only have access to colored only section because despite your perceived proximity to whiteness, per the purview of Uncle Sam and Jen Crowell, you would still. to whiteness, per the purview of Uncle Sam and Jen Crowell, you would still be labeled as colored too. As a parent, I understand we all want what is best for our children. Our job is to make sure the next generation does better than the last. Through this district's mistakes, we have a very teachable moments for our teacher, for our children. We have taught our children a very valuable lesson. The lesson being, our children must be the allies, and they must be the acceptance that they want others to be for them. Compassion is a two-way street. If you cannot give compassion, be prepared, and expect compassion to not be given to you. We have also taught our children that the way to get ahead and to do better is not by one marginalized community tearing down another. The very tools, rhetoric, and behaviors you use to tear someone down end up being the same tools, rhetoric, and behaviors that end up holding you back. You saw this firsthand when the district allowed the rampant use of the N-word to go unchecked. Then the district allowed a disruptive gathering to take place at the high school where black students were called the N-word, and Latino students were told to go back where they came from. I sat back and watched how many of you parents heard and saw all of this, and you sat in silence. When the black parents asked for accountability and transparency about the discrimination on BHUSD campuses, you remained quiet. But when the board utilized those same lack of transparency and accountability to come after a teacher that affected your child's class, you were all up in arms. Even the very parent that was quick to silence and kick black parents out of the grade chats for bringing up the treatment against black students was then quick to jump on this very mic and speak up because her child's class had been affected. Through your silence and compliance, you played yourself, because now if the board is to take accountability and be transparent for this one white teacher, then they will have to be accountable and transparent about their failure to provide a safe and inclusive education environment for the black, Latino, L, and LGBTQ students. It has repeatedly failed. And if you're talking about permits, since you sat here and made us wait through this long meeting, that you need to bring back the permits you had that included diversity, because this district lacks it. And while the board changing the last minute, I, I understand the excuses made, but to me, it seemed it was made to discourage parents and community members from speaking up or remaining online in order to view public comments. This is a hot mess of your own making. Judy, you sat up here and rammed your mouth aimlessly in efforts to deter us from get, get, giving you the earful you truly deserved. It was very akin to Storm Thurman's 1957 filibuster, as a means of trying to prevent the civil rights of passing, acts of passing. You can change the agenda, you can delay all you want. We are not new to this, we are true to this. It's in our DNA. When we as the black community set our sights on change, that change always comes. You would know this if you took the time to take one of those ethnic courses.
Thank you.
Zola Mascheriki. Zola? Big part, I can't hear you.
She's ceded her time to Melanie Massey.
Okay, Melanie Massey. Where's Melanie Massey on...
Melanie is ceding to, uh, Zola.
Melanie Massey is ceding her time to Zola. Well, where's Melanie Massey?
She's right, she's right there.
Oh, you put her over here. She just...
She's a write-in.
She's a write-in. Okay, so I'm calling on Melanie Massey. Is that correct?
On Zola.
Oh, she's giving it to Zola? Okay, Melanie is not speaking. Okay, please.
Melanie's right there.
Come on.
Zola's here.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm just trying to look over here. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. You have six minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. It's really nice to see you all again. I will start by saying that I added this first portion just in response to some things that I heard. I'm here to speak about now three things. I was gonna speak about two issues. Oh, can you hear me? I was gonna speak about two issues, but I will start with the immediate one that came up in this meeting. I want to start by saying that I'm a graduate of Dartmouth College and Harvard Law School. I attended USC Film School, then I spent eight years as a part-time professor at USC in the School of Cinematic Arts. I taught a course called Advanced Producing to graduate students while I did my full-time job. I don't usually discuss my pedigree in public, but I must wholeheartedly agree with our board president, Mrs. Marcus, we should see our students through to the best schools in the world. I've been an interviewer on behalf of Dartmouth and Harvard. I invite the board to ask me, and I'm happy to share what those schools are looking for. Harvard has a 4% acceptance rate. A majority of students with 4.0 GPAs get rejected every year. It used to be 50%, now it's up to 70 and more. Book learning is just the baseline. One language may not even be enough. Those accepted are not only intelligent but well-rounded students. Awareness of the world is part of the criteria. If the goal of this board is to circumvent the California requirement for ethnic studies, our students will continue to fall behind. Regardless of politics, a basic understanding of different ethnicities is required, like simply understanding what is an ethnicity, which is defined as a quality or fact of belonging to a population group or subgroup made up of people who share a common cultural background. So Jamaica, the land of my mother, is comprised of a myriad of ethnic groups from Europe, Asia, Africa, and India. While the Persian ethnic group is the dominant ethnicity in Iran, there are many other ethnicities like Azeri, Kurd, Loar, Loari, and others. While I cannot speak for Harvard, I can tell you that anyone who doesn't understand ethnicity is not welcome at Harvard. It is anti-intellectual to be that willfully ignorant. Perhaps this is why there are so, there are only a couple of graduating seniors going to the Ivy League from our district, and maybe there are people here who celebrate the anti-intellectualism. But if we want our, our kids to compete on a world stage, we need to step up. We need to do better. That's my comment on ethnicity. My second comment is, excuse me, let me get some order. It's Black History Month. I came to the district because I was told there was great programming around Black History Month. When I arrived, I discovered that it was the work of the 92% black women, black moms sustaining these programs. I'm here to ask that a line item be built into the board's budget for next year and beyond, so that going forward, we can ensure programming across all schools and that this month is properly celebrated. We, the black moms, the 92%, we don't mind doing the work. We just have to be supported, and we need the resources and money to make this celebration great. We must make this a priority, and I would like to state the obvious. I think people know this. Black history is not for black people. Black History Month is not for black people. Black people know black history. Black culture is mainstream culture. Black music is popular music. Black history is American history. The programming for this month should not be sidelined when it is, when it is to provide cultural enrichment to everyone. My third issue. For the last few months, parents and students have come here to talk about issues facing our schools and community, whether it be overt racism in our schools, teachers being fired for sharing their truth, or an admin laying hands on a student. A group of concerned parents wrote a letter asking the board and superintendent for three things: transparency, accountability, and meaningful action. This is all we parents want. I love our school and district. Horace Mann was wonderful. Beverly Vista under Rich Waters is stellar. I just picked electives with my twins, and I was reminded how many resources we have that other districts do not. We don't need the schools to be perfect. Obstacles often pave the way for opportunities. Our children are young enough that some of these experiences can build resilience and become teachable lessons. But when administrators don't show transparency, accountability, and action, what are the students meant to learn? That bad behavior is acceptable in school? That might makes right, meaning the group that holds the majority goes unchecked? We need, one, a clear statement of facts; two, what has been done; and three, what is the plan going forward? What is the process for, for getting a response from you all? I ask that not rhetorically. We will keep coming back in larger and larger numbers. Your public comments will get longer and lauter, longer, and we will not give up until we have clarity and transparency. We are waiting on you. I ask again what I asked in the last board meeting that I attended, which is for you to take meaningful action immediately, immediately, immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reggie Allen. And after Reggie is Markeith Ellis.
Can you hear me? Yes. First, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Black History Month. As a parent in the middle school, I want to express how grateful I am to the many Beverly Vista parents, teachers, PTA members, and administrators for working together to bring such an inspiring Black History Month program to the students. I wish that all the schools in the district had the kinds of major events we do, but I recognize that not every school has the same resources to draw upon. In addition to funding, the main resources necessary for Black History Month are a dedicated group of parents, teachers, and students from all cultures, as well as the supportive PTA and administration who want our students to know that black history is American history, and that there is more that connects cultures than divides them. I'm hopeful that in the future, BHUSD can pool these valuable resources, so we can have a district-wide celebration of Black History Month, perhaps with a rolling schedule of events across all the schools that can be recorded and shared with all students. I am especially excited about the speaker the middle school is bringing this week, Dr. Jill Humphries, a BHUSD alum, former member of the Council on Foreign Relations, and higher education ambassador. Dr. Humphries will speak on the Double Fee or Double Victory Campaign of the 1940s, when black Americans fought against Nazism abroad and racism at home. Lessons such as this show the powers of cross-cultural alliances to fight against discrimination. They are particularly needed at this time when our district is at a crossroads, as we decide how to respond to the many complaints of bigotry and bullying that have been brought to this school board by concerned students, teachers, parents, and alumni. There are some who have misrepresented these problems as resulting from racial, religious, or political divisions within our community. I want to tell you what the real divide in BHUSD is. The real divide is between people who will tolerate our students being in an environment of bigotry and bullying, and people who will not. Fortunately, the vast majority of us belong to the latter group. If you are a district parent similarly concerned about these issues and want to partner with us in finding constructive solutions, we encourage you to join our Concerned Parent Chat. We already have over 100 parents across the grade levels and schools. You can ask any of them to send you the link to sign up, and we welcome and appreciate your allyship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Markeith Ellis.
Okay. So I heard the reason for pushing back the public comment to the end, but it's also very indicative of how you prioritize the public comments, or particular public, public comments, rather. You guys don't seem to follow any rules. Your own Google forum says the public comments are held early in the meeting to change, and to change it without warning is, is unexcusable. We have lives too. It's not just about y'all. Now, to get on topic, I wrote you guys an unloved letter because I'm sick of the rapid racism in this district. So I'm gonna try to make this the worst three minutes of your day and every day until you fix this issue, because these are our kids we're talking about. Surely, if our kids, if you expect our kids to go through four years of denigration or even more, you can definitely go through three minutes of embarrassment. The last time I spoke, I clearly stated the racism, the racist environment in these schools need to be fixed now. Now is then now, and no substantial changes or outline consequences for racism, which brings me to another delusion, because you don't seem to appear to know what now means. Now is defined as an adverb, meaning at the present time or at this moment. Well, that moment is gone, and you missed that bus. So now I'm gonna use the word immediately. We need outline consequences for racism immediately, not an email insinuating false claims as if all black parents and black kids are lying. We need unbiased enforcement of those consequences immediately. We need zero tolerance policy practice and put in place immediately. Immediate means now. Next illusion is y'all think y'all doing a good job. As far as I'm concerned, all you guys doing are sitting up there warming up chairs and collecting a check. Y'all are not coming up with real solutions and real issues about what the district is facing. Real issues like racism, racial bullying, and harassment. The entire district is in disarray. Y'all are not dictating the environment racism is. Y'all are allowing racism to roam free and terrorize the black demographic, which makes it unsafe for everybody, because where there's racism, there will eventually be violent, violence. The only reason there's not is because the black kids are taking the high road, but every road ends. Y'all have pushed out black principals, black teachers, black students, black staff. The only thing y'all haven't pushed out is the black cooks. I guess the food is good. Y'all are making it worse, not better. It is clear you're extreme indifference. You are not fit to serve, lead, and protect all the students in this district. Do us a favor and make way for more competent leaders that are not paralyzed by indifference. The district cannot and will not work as is. Something has to change, and quite frankly, that change needs to start with you guys.
Thank you.
Candace Lindsay.
Okay. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and community leaders. My name is Candace Lindsay, and I have been a proud resident of Beverly Hills since 1998. Since my son has started attend, started attending BV preschool in 2014, I have dedicated myself to this community in many ways. I have been honored to perform at and support the installation of two of our past mayors, three times mayor and city council member Lily Bossy, and also Bob Wonderlick. I have assisted in city council reelection campaign, served as a city commissioner for two years, and contribute as an executive board member at Horace Mann. Additionally, I have been a PTA member at El Rodeo, Horace Mann, and Beverly Vista numerous times, always working to support the education and well-being of our children. But tonight, I'm not speaking to you as a community member, I'm speaking as a mother. My son and several of his friends are repeatedly called the N-word in school. Monkey sounds made at him while in class, while class is in session. This has happened in the middle of class or on the schoolyard. This is not a one-time event. It is happening consistently over the last couple of years at BVMS. And yet, he is expected to walk into the same school every day as if these words don't carry weight, of centuries of pain and oppression. This is not acceptable. The fact that my son says, "Don't worry about it, Mom. I'm used to be called N-word at this point," infuriates me. Most of his teachers have been very helpful in not allowing it in their classrooms, and this year, as president, principal, Mr. Waters has been very helpful in the slowing down of this culture of racism. But he can be everywhere, all the time on campus as it occurs. My son is supposed to be attending BHHS, Beverly Hills High School next year, and this really worries me because of all the bullying and racial slurs and the Trump rally occurrence. I keep hearing that this is happening at Beverly Hills High School, and it's really making me question sending my son there next year. These incidents are occurring, and they need to be addressed. Let me be clear, racial slurs are not just words. They are weapons designed to denigrate, to humiliate, and to make a child feel like they do not belong. And yet, despite our district's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, my son continues to endure this de-humiliation within our schools. California Law Education Code 200, 220, and 233 mandates that schools provide a learning environment free from discrimination, harassment, and hate-motivated behavior. Yet, when racial slurs are dismissed as kids being kids, or minimized as just words, we are failing our students and, and we are failing my son. I'm here tonight to demand real action. So I ask you, what is being done to ensure black students and other marginalized and bully students in this district feel protected? How are the, how are we holding students accountable for racial harassment? What training is in place to ensure educators and district leaders address these incidences appropriately? I'm calling for clear and enforceable zero tolerance policy on racial slurs, mandating anti-racism education. This is not just about my son. This is about ensuring that no child in our school has been made to feel less than because of the color of their skin. I have dedicated a lot of my time and passion to the city. I have worked alongside many of you to make this community better, and now I need to see that same commitment is protecting, that same commitment in protecting my child and others feeling like him. My son deserves better. Our students deserve better, and Beverly Hills can and must be better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I am a community member, and I'm concerned. You're on the school board because you care about children, I would assume. If a community is telling you that their children feel attacked and hurt and daily denigrated and... And then there were programs earlier, when something was brought up about different ethnicities, the first thing you said was DEI, sounds like DEI. Most of you have probably gotten your jobs or position because of DEI or through legacy, which is the same as affirmative action, but you think that's okay. But you don't think learning about other people in other cultures is okay. I assume you take your children on vacation to wonderful spots in the world. Why? To learn about different cultures, to experience different experiences from something they can't get in their own environment. So why is it different in the school? Why is that a problem when you're trying to educate children to be accepting of everyone? The world is beautiful, people are beautiful, most places you go in the world is beautiful, is a welcoming environment, so why not start at home? Why not start with your children? If you're here to make sure children are educated properly, coming to a hostile environment leads to low test scores. Coming to a hostile envi-- no child should have to go to see a psychiatrist or a psychologist because they are going to school and they're being attacked. No child, it should hurt your heart that any child feel like, "I don't want to go to school because I'm gonna be attacked." Schools should be a safe place, it's a public place. We should all want to embrace every child. No child should feel unloved and unwanted. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Ashton Morris, I'm a representative of California Black Power Network. We're an organization of 40, black-led organizations across the state. We've been made aware of this, and this issue, and the racial disparities that's been going on in Beverly Hills schools. And me also too, you know, parenting a child in the middle school as well, this is also deeply concerned in there. We've, over the course of the night, my fellow African-Americans, have, we've all talked about there, like you said, DEI was victimized, and this push of villainizing what DEI is. But me personally speaking, me hearing, and me also too being a graduate of an Ivy League school, Masters of Public Administration from the University of Pennsylvania, if America Oxy was this big thing, it sounds like the African-Americans are the most talented and the most qualified a lot of the times. And you know why? Because you mentioned putting money and effort in sports. The equity aspect of it is if its equity is always improving. We look at what most of our professional sports leagues are, they're predominantly black. We look at the graduate rate of postgraduate degrees, they're black women. It's because that one-third mentality that a lot of us, because my mother grew up picking cotton in deep south Tennessee, she worked three times as hard, she got a master's degree from an Ivy League as well, Yale. And that three-fourth being third less is what these children is having to go through now, every time they get called nigger, because I'm gonna say that word, I'm not gonna do N-word. And when these children say this to them, and they're villainizing, antagonizing of that, and why that hasn't been addressed, and why that needs to be addressed, because you're putting that same loser mentality every time where they feel like they have the proudness to be able to say that. Because you're pushing those kids down, just like you're using DEI as a negative word. It's to push them down so them to work three times as hard as they're. So how are you gonna raise your children to be better than children that's having to go through that? Because they never will. It's just gonna be the hate that's gonna be in them, that's gonna be targeting them. So they're gonna be losers all throughout their life, and then they're gonna be hatred, and then they're gonna put MAGA, and then they're gonna be racist, and then there's legacy ideology that you guys are pushing and saying that's gonna be what's gonna get them through our life. And then eventually, because our kids will uprise and do things, and other kids from other background races that are in the school system is gonna prevail, but look at what the cost. Why in our education, why can't we push equity, and really truly what equity is, giving all the children the same opportunities, same things from Jump Street, and really truly see who, regardless of race, creed, religion, are the best, the talented, the most loving, and the best children? Because that's what this school district deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I am stunned, and I am heartbroken, and I hope I can make it through this without boo-hooing, because Los Angeles is my city. Beverly Hills is my city. I love this city. I came here 47 years ago with my mother, who was a Rockefeller Fellow, coming with her to a press conference to be appointed to superintendent of schools of a local district. I went to UCLA, I married my college sweetheart, who was a basketball player at UCLA. I say all of this to humanize us, because it feels like you guys think we are less than, and I don't understand it. I am heartbroken. My three sons, gifted, went to Warner, then to Harbert Westlake. Our pediatricians are in Beverly Hills. My sons work for WME, CAA, UTA. We come to Beverly Hills all the time, and I am stunned that I am sitting across the room from six people who have allowed African-American children to be called nigger, and to have a game where children are able to purchase a nigger pass. I'm stunned, and you seem emotionless even now. I'm just stunned, and I'm heartbroken, and I am going to write every person I know who is somebody in Los Angeles and Beverly Hills to let them know what is going on here? What happened to our city that you think it's okay for our children to be treated in this way? I don't understand you. I don't. You're Martians to me, you're inhuman to me. I don't understand people who could treat African-Americans like this in 2025 and sit here, put us at the end of the meeting, do an African-American History Month. I don't understand you. Who are you? I am going to read up on you, because I just, I'm stunned. I'm just stunned. And to know that these parents have been going through this for months? For years? I don't know why you're still here, I just don't. I just don't. I just don't.
Thank you.
Okay. Gunner, you've asked to speak, but you're ceding your time to Robbie Curtis, is that correct? What is that?
I've written it.
What is that?
It's a pressure.
Okay, I just--
That's fine.
I took this one because he was, alright. He doesn't, nobody's getting nine minutes.
Noam and Gunner, so cross off Noam and Gunner and Robbie.
Oh, Robbie is conceding three minutes to--
Robbie's speaking.
Oh, Robbie's speaking. Noam or Gunner is, I'll cross them, one of them is giving Robbie three minutes, right? Okay. Mr. Curtis?
We're doing nine minutes?
No, we're not doing nine minutes, we're only doing six minutes.
Well, I wish I'd known that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll try and keep it close to six minutes.
Thank you very much, we said that last week, and I guess you were not here last--
I was, and I was very sick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry--
Spoken up. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you this evening. This time I remembered to bring my glasses. Good evening, Mrs. Marcus, Board members, and Superintendent Bregge. Gone. Here I am again, not because I want to be, but because I have to be. When elected officials ignore constituents, when emails go unanswered, when leadership turns a blind eye and goes silent, someone has to hold you accountable. Respect, that's something real leaders understand. It's not just a word for campaign speeches, it's an action, a commitment. It means when those who are elected, those who elected you reach out, you respond. Yet, despite contacting every member of this board and Dr. Bregge regarding the disgrace that is the Romeo Carey suspension, most of you chose to ignore me. Mrs. Marcus, an immediate response. Mrs. Manichieri, late Sunday night. The rest of you, not a peep. Maybe you think you're too busy, maybe you think accountability is optional, maybe you think I'm not important. So I have a little story for you. I have a friend of nearly 50 years, some of you may know his name, Rick Caruso. He runs a multi-billion-dollar empire, employs thousands, and still personally answers the hundreds of emails he receives daily. I once asked him why, he replied to me at 3:30 a.m., and he said, "If someone takes the time to write to me, they deserve the respect of a prompt response." So how can a man managing a business empire answer his emails, but four of you can't even hit reply? Can you see how that comes across to the people who elected you? But my purpose for being here tonight is to speak about something much larger, the administration's pattern of mismanagement, intimidation, and retaliation. Romeo Carey has been targeted, that is a fact. Matt Horvath told him outright before his suspension, "If KBEV students upload their video, the district will suspend you for two weeks with pay." The video went up, the retaliation wasn't just a threat, it was carried out immediately. Two weeks have now stretched into two months. But punishing a respected educator for defending student journalists wasn't enough. The district decided to manufacture a scandal out of thin air. I have firsthand knowledge, after speaking with one of the several KBEV students who were pulled into a room and interrogated by Matt Horvath, at the top of the list of intimidating, ridiculous, unfounded, and despicable questions asked was, "Has Mr. Carey ever asked you to undress in the KBEV studio?" No allegations, no complaints, just an investigator who, by the way, should be investigated for bias, personal animus, and has been named in multiple lawsuits against this district. He was simply fishing for dirt by pressuring and applying undue influence on minors. That is not an investigation, that is a smear campaign, and it borders on harassment of a minor child, which raises serious Title IX concerns. Romeo Carey isn't just an educator, he's a father, a mentor, a respected filmmaker, and a man with a stellar and unblemished reputation. And after 26, 20 years, this district has chosen to drag his name through the mud with insinuations about hidden cameras? Give me a break, that's shameful. And while this board keeps Romeo Carey in limbo, taxpayer dollars continue to be wasted on substitute teacher with dubious credentials who was caught making false claims about his connections to top universities, all for the bargain price of $400 a day. Why? Because a student-produced video allegedly showed one of your senior administrators putting his hands on a student, which should have resulted in immediate termination. This isn't just about incompetence, it's a pattern, a retaliatory campaign against an educator who dared to stand up for the First Amendment and resist the BHEA's takeover of CTE programs. And what has the board done? Nothing. But watch the days of the school calendar pass by. You sit here quietly, hoping this will go away, that people will lose interest. That is not gonna happen. Let me be clear, this board does not work for you, Dr. Bregge. You are the foundation upon which this district is built. You also don't work for his overpaid inner circle of administrators. You are here to serve the students, parents, and the community whose tax dollars fund this district. And we expect and demand better of you. Some of us have even taken to call this the Bregley Hills Unified School District. If it wasn't so sad, it would be funny. And just so you know, we're also considering taking a page from Elon Musk and forming DOB, the Department of Board Efficiency, to investigate the wasteful spending this administration keeps racking up. But let's look at the bigger picture, because this legal travesty seems eerily familiar. Oh yes, the latest district lawsuit, it follows the same pattern as the current situation, hostile work environment, discrimination and harassment, retaliation, whistleblower suppression. And why wouldn't it? It's the same cast of district bad actors who are writing the script. It's you, Dr. Bregge, it's Matt Horvath, and it's Rebecca Starkins, who allow this toxic culture to fester under their watch and your oversight. This isn't-- I have just two more sentences. This isn't an isolated incident, it's a pattern of intimidation, defamation, and retaliation, all under the same administration. If you refuse to lead, there are plenty of qualified people in this community who will. So here's what needs to happen immediately. Stop wasting our money, restore integrity of this district, reinstate Romeo Carey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by expressing my extreme disappointment in the board's recent actions. Over the past almost nine weeks during Mr. Carey's forced leave of absence, many students, parents, and community members have come to express their concern about Mr. Carey and the way the school administration has conducted itself. They've been met with apathy and disinterest from the board. During the last board meeting, even though I wasn't able to attend in person, I was able to watch from home, and I witnessed members of the board leaving their desks during public comment and even talking over students who were attempting to express their opinions. I've attended almost every board meeting since 10th grade, I've listened to discussions that have gone on for over an hour on what color beige to paint the side of the school. And yet, when the community shows up in numbers like it did last week and talks about an issue that is extremely personal and important to everyone, the members of the board can't be bothered to pay attention. I find it especially disheartening because it concerns a man who has sacrificed his evenings and has stayed extremely late hours to make sure that your meetings are able to be seen by the community. Mr. Carey has been under investigation for almost nine weeks. I'd like to reiterate my statement from last week that, to my knowledge, Mr. Mark Mead's investigation lasted only a week, and Mr. Ellis never received any investigation. This is part of a pattern of prioritizing district administration over teachers and Starting tonight, the district is now paying five employees for a job that could be done by one person. Members of the school administration have also started to attempt to ruin Mr. Carey's reputation by attempting to force a narrative that he's guilty of sexual harassment. This is appalling and not the behavior of healthy people. The district's job is not to serve individual vendettas, the job of the district is to educate the youth of the community as best as possible, and Mr. Carey is the most exemplary example of that that I've ever seen. Also, I'd like to bring the board's attention to another matter that recent, that I've noticed, I know that not, that Mrs. Sabag and Mr. Stewart were not on the board during this, but la, on December 10, the board meeting of December 10, you were presented an audit for that, for the third year in a row, the, for the third year in a row, teachers have been, have not been receiving the percentage of funds that they should be receiving by the, by the school. I believe that the deficit is in excess of $10 million, and the district's excuse for this was a one-time COVID-19 grant. And the, in the budget of 2023 to 2024, it was stated that this grant was about, that all COVID-19 funds were about to run out. However, it has been, however, the deficit has only grown. So if you, if you want the paperwork, it's online, and I'll also have it if you want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Next is Matthew Caravan, Cavarani? Hi there. You've got three minutes.
You've got three minutes.
All right. Members of the board, how are you guys? My name's Matthew Cavarani. I've been a three-year student of Mr. Carey, and it really wouldn't sit right with me if I didn't voice my concerns involving the situation about him. Mr. Carey has been more than just a teacher to me. He has been a mentor and a guiding light. He was always there to answer my questions, not just about school or his class, but about life in general, something many teachers are hesitant to talk about or discuss. Mr. Carey stood out as one of the positive things Beverly has to offer, and he would consistently outshine all the negative and dark energy, like on campus. And in my opinion, he embodied the spirit of our school, and his presence was one of the last remaining sources of genuine school spirit. As a student at Beverly, I'm really deeply concerned about what is happening with Mr. Carey. There's been way, way more serious issues on campus recently, and the situation just seems very small in comparison to that. Many students, including myself, were eager to see what's happening with Mr. Carey. And although I'm not in the advanced class, I know many students treat it like a job, and some actually, it's a job for them. They get paid. So I just hope that you guys can provide some clarity on this matter. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is Jared Maybaum here? Jared? Okay, Jared, you're ceding your time to Jason. Jason, you have six minutes.
Can I start? Evening, President Marcus, Vice President Manichieri, members of the board. I am here to speak about what it means to be a good representative of those you have been elected to protect, inspire, educate, and support. Your job is to protect, inspire, educate, and support me and my fellow students at Beverly Hills High School. I don't care if you individually, or you as a school board, or if you as school administrators don't like Mr. Carey. I understand Mr. Carey has a unique perspective on the world. I understand Mr. Carey has a reputation of pushing the envelope to protect what he holds dear. And I understand that sometimes what he does and says makes some people uncomfortable. But that is the point of Mr. Carey. That is the purpose of Mr. Carey. He has dedicated his career to helping students discover, develop, and expand their abilities. What more could he do? What more should he do as an educator? What more could you or anyone ask him to do? In my opinion, he has and is doing everything I, we, and you should hope all educators have the fortitude to do, to protect, inspire, educate, and support students. Mr. Carey's objective, his goal, his drive, his purpose, is to protect, inspire, educate, and support his students, exactly what the voters in the last election charged you to do, hired you to do. What I am here to do is to ask you to do your job. Protect me, inspire me, educate me, support me. Protect me from a society where I could be suspended from my job without explanation, a hearing, or transparency. Inspire me to be open and honest. You can inspire me by being open and honest with me as to why Mr. Carey is not in the classroom. Educate me and prove that the lessons we have learned about due process and fairness are more than words in the books we have read and lectures given by our educators, but actual pillars of our society that you agree with and adhere to. You can do this by being open, honest, and transparent with us. Hold a hearing and make a finding concerning Mr. Carey's fitness to return to the classroom. I don't know if you owe that to him, but you do owe that to me. Support me. I need my teacher. I, like my classmates, have aspirations for the future. We need our educators like Mr. Carey to achieve our goals. Taxpayers are currently paying a substitute teacher and multiple additional staff members to do Mr. Carey's job while also paying Mr. Carey. Please explain how this massive waste of taxpayer money is reasonable. And a federal court last week issued a ruling that President Trump can't put employees on paid administrative leave without good cause. If the President of the United States can't do that, how can you keep Mr. Carey on paid leave without cause? Simple answer. You can't. Do the right thing. You are literally paying Mr. Carey to do nothing. You have had months to investigate. Do something. It makes no sense to pay Mr. Carey to sit at home. If you have proof he did something that requires him to be fired, fire him. If you don't, bring him back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Hassan, I'm sorry. Huh? She's, she's seated her time to Mr. Curtis, but Gunner did also, so I only gave him six minutes. If she wishes to speak, she can.
Hello. I ceded my time to speak tonight because I feel like I've kind of said enough. I've been to more board, yes, I have. I've been to record-setting board meetings. I have emailed more than I ever have in my life. I don't think I've ever emailed a board member. Yes, I know. I hate it. I'm up till like 2:00 in the morning. It's crazy. I want to sleep. I want my life back. It's just been intense. I don't understand why. In the past, I sort of told, you guys know my story now. Been here since 2008, in the district with a child. Anytime I had an issue, I could just talk to a board member, and we would talk about it, and we would discuss it, and there would be open communication, and then it would resolve. And this has been so frustrating. And I've listened to everybody here, because I didn't prepare anything, because I said everything I had to say tonight. I'm sure you, hopefully, you all read it. But I just want to say that I am so disheartened that everyone here who's speaking, everybody, every parent, every child, they're saying the same thing. There's a lack of transparency. There's a lack of communication. Half of the teach, I mean, all of the teachers that have been fired, all of the issues that have happened, could have been a communication. Ms. Marcus, I know you said that, you know, I know you said that nobody's perfect, and I appreciate that, and nobody's perfect, and I am fine with that. I just want things to be fair. I want things to be honest. I want the people who come here to come with a good heart, who care about kids. Nobody should be bullied. Nobody should be harassed. Children shouldn't do it to other children, and administrators should not do it to children. It is unacceptable. And if I have to put myself on the line to set that limit and set that boundary, then I have to. I don't want to. But, but that's why I, you guys are here to do it. But, but please do not think that you know our children better than we know our children. Please do not think that you know these teachers better than we know our teachers. We are here. We are there. I don't think any of you have kids in this program. I know my children. I know these children. They are exceptional. And to say that you're trying to protect them, in trying to protect them, you have opened them up to so much harm. And it is devastating to watch. So yes, I understand that, that nobody's perfect, and I think that things could have been, whether it was AP teacher, was it fashion design, any of the teachers, all the lawsuits you have, the tennis coach, everybody, a lot of these could have been conversations. Okay? I've watched so many board meetings where people came to you, like tonight, and said, "We need you to do something." And instead of being accountable, everybody just said, "We don't have a problem." We go to the paper. We didn't fire Ms. Garrett. We didn't fire her. I don't know where my child's teacher was, but we didn't fire her. We don't have a racism issue. We don't have a transparency issue. We don't harass anybody. We're perfect. And that's a problem. So please, please, do something about it. Listen to us. Have a conversation with us. Address what's going on so we can grow, so these kids don't have to be bullied and harassed and feel unsafe. Thank you. I hope you never hear from me again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have Dylan Neiman. And you are, Dylan, are you here? Dylan? You see him?
Oh, here.
No, that's not Dylan.
Dylan is not here. Well, Dylan was ceding time to Ava Wisman. And Ava will have three minutes if I don't have someone that cedes her time. Ava?
Can I cede time to her, please?
Well, I don't have you on the list. Ava, are you Ava?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, thank you.
But I just, I really need the, I need the extra time. I don't know why Dylan.
She was not even on the list. I mean, that's.
Her name was supposed to be. She can have my time.
What's your name?
Nazila.
Nazila?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'd be happy to do that. Thank you. So you have six minutes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Ava Wisman, and by now you should all know who I am, since this is not my first, nor my second, but my third time speaking to fight for Mr. Carey, and I hope it's my last. The fact that we're still here, two months later, demanding justice for a man who has done nothing wrong, is beyond disgraceful. I have completely lost all respect for this board. You sit here pretending to care about students, but your actions prove otherwise. How am I supposed to trust a board that is more focused on punishing a teacher who actually made a difference in our lives than on addressing real problems like fraud, stolen money, and corruption happening right under your noses? But I guess that's easier to ignore, isn't it? Instead, it's made it your mission to get rid of Mr. Carey. And for what? For posting the truth? For running an honest news channel? This is not justice. This is a pathetic attempt to protect your own image at the expense of a man who has given everything to this school. It's not to say that Mr. Brown, the temporary replacement for Mr. Carey, isn't a good teacher, but he is unable to replace Mr. Carey and everything he has done for this school. But let's talk about the absolute disgrace of an investigation happening right now. You are dragging students into private meetings, twisting stories, and making outrageous accusations that have been absolutely no basis in reality. Asking female students if Mr. Carey has ever forced us to undress in KBEV? Do you even hear yourselves? Mr. Carey treated every student like family. He uplifted us, supported us, and believed in us when no one else did. To even suggest, like, such a disgusting allegation is not only insulting, it's proof that this board has no shame. You claim to care about us, but that's a lie. The truth is, you care about your reputation and nothing more. If you truly cared about students, Mr. Carey would be here. The man who has actually harmed a student, Mr. Mead, got a slap on the wrist, a one-week suspension, while Mr. Carey, who simply posted a video on our unbiased news channel, has been gone for two months. Please, make it make sense. Does this sound like justice to you? Because to me, it sounds like corruption. This school is broken without Mr. Carey, and I will speak at every single board meeting until you bring him back. I, I know that you guys are, are sick of, of people that keep talking about Mr. Carey, and I, I understand. I, I get that it can be repetitive. But what you don't understand is that when, whenever teachers are on administrative leave, you don't hear students going to board meetings and speaking, and hundreds of students that are, are speaking up for Mr. Carey. And that's because Mr. Carey isn't just a teacher. He's a special person. He's, he's done so much more than just be a teacher. And, and you guys cannot take him away from us. I, I understand that, like I said, he's not a perfect person, but who is? Mr. Carey deserves to be back at our school, and I, and I will keep, I will keep coming, I will keep coming to every single board meeting, because I already do. I've been, I've been at every board meeting since almost freshman year. I've been coming to every board meeting, and I hear all the conversations that happen, and I, and I listen, and I never spoke about anything until Mr. Carey. And that's simply because I, I cannot fathom how, how horrible it is, like, this whole situation. I, I really, I, I need you guys to actually do something about it, because I really feel like we all just sit here and voice our opinions, and I feel like you guys understand it, I feel like you guys are listening, but why is nothing being done? What, when is this gonna be resolved? I really, like, I, I go to school, and I forget that Mr. Carey's not there. I go to his classroom, and I honestly tear up every time I realize that he's not there anymore. I, not just me, but so many of his students was, was more than just students. It was his family, and I feel like I lost my family, and you guys are taking him away from us. And, and I know that you guys, I've had you guys come and say, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry." Well, if, if you're sorry, then why is nothing being done? I, I really, I want something to actually be done about this. Like, I, I don't want to have to come speak again, but I will, and I will keep speaking. But can, can people, please, I'm, I'm asking you, please, I, I want this to be resolved. So hopefully, this is my last time that I have to speak about this. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rocco, is Rocco here? Rocco? Okay, Rocco has ceded his time to Mr. Rizzoli, and Mr. Rizzoli, you have six minutes. I just need to make sure that he was here because of the way I.
He's always here.
I know that. I know.
And thank you, Ava, and Zach, and Jason. KBEV students, you've all told me that you have the best interest of the students in mind, and that's your top priority. When we elected you, that's the least we could expect. But because of your lack of transparency, giving no information to the students or the parents of this, of what this is all about, we've been waiting nine weeks, nine weeks now, and we still have nothing. For those past nine weeks, Mr. Carey's suspension, all you've done is brought tremendous stress to my son and his KBEV classmates. Undue stress. Is this the best interest of the students? Really? Undue stress in the classroom? Why? So Dr. Breggy and Horvath can run a, what seems to be a witch hunt investigation? A fishing expedition? About watching kids changing? Really? Is that what you're fishing for? It ain't happening. Not happening. So seems like this comes down to KBEV passwords. YouTube passwords? Is this what this is all about? Passwords because you want to control and censor student journalism? I mean, come on. This is what you're trying to do? Control student journalism? Really? Listen to that. Does that, what does that sound like? Does it sound horrible to you? Sounds horrible to me. Isn't student journalism what KBEV is all about? These are passwords and passcodes that have been passed down from student to student for many years without any problem until now. Why now? 20 years, it's been okay. But now, it's a problem. I have a suggestion for you. Start your own YouTube channel. Put Rebecca Starkins in charge of it. She could brand this any way you want. Leave KBEV alone. KBEV belongs to the students. I appeal to the board. Please hear what we think is the best interest. I appeal to the board, please hear what we think is the best interest of our students. Please, Ms. Manichari, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Sabag, board members that I voted for. And I'm happy to have you here. And I appeal to the rest of the board to stop this madness. That seems to be driven by egotistical pettiness. And all I have to say to finish, right there. Can you read that? Free Mr. Carey. Reinstate him immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia Albon. Or is it Olivier?
Good evening. It's been a long day, 10:00 PM now. A lot of people have been talking, so I'm not gonna be trying to waste your time by repeating things that have already been said. But I came here two weeks ago at my first board meeting to support Mr. Carey. I've asked for explanations of why you wanted to fire him. I have received no answer. I am here again today because nothing has changed. And I will support him, and I won't stop until I know if you have a good reason to fire him. And if not, we should have him back. Some things have changed. You have hired a replacement teacher. I'm not going to comment about him or his skills, but I must say that you have paid two teachers for the price of one. And there is one that is extremely qualified for the job. You have started an investigation two months ago. And honestly, it looks like you are desperate to find any wrongdoing from Mr. Carey. You still haven't completed your investigation after such a long time. And for me, it looks like you already made your decision. You want to fire Mr. Carey. You are just looking for the right reason to say he's fired. And you haven't found it yet, but you are still looking for it. And I think it's not okay. This is the result of your opacity. Bad rumor starts, we start accusing people, pointing at each other. You are taking away one of your school's best teachers from his students in the middle of the school year, for no reason apparently. This is hurting the students and their performance. You were talking about the school's performance earlier in the board meeting. And if you have a good reason, we need to know, and we need to know now. Not at the next board meeting in two weeks. We won't stop coming here until you tell us. I'd rather not to be here at 10:00 PM. I don't think you also want that. So this is what's not going to change. We need justice for Mr. Carey, we need justice for the students who are the first victims of this. And I'm gonna read a little text. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. Martin Luther King.
Thank you.
Delara Yektaphar.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and members of the community. At the last board meeting, I sat here and spoke so highly of our school district. I shared how I flourished at Beverly Hills High School, taking full advantage of the incredible academic opportunities and extracurricular programs available to students like me. I was here to defend my beloved teacher, Mr. Carey. But tonight, I sit here before you feeling alienated, disrespected, and unsafe because of the way I was treated by Assistant Superintendent Matt Horvath. He has abused his power, lacked all compassion, and demonstrated that he is willing to frame Mr. Carey at any cost, even if this means using innocent students like me as pawns in his game. Let me be clear, I'm not a pawn. I'm a, I'm a dedicated student with a high GPA who's actively involved in our school and community. I tell you all this because of the way Mr. Horvath treated me behind closed doors. And this is not how you treat a student who not only excels in the district but embodies what's right with this school. I've done nothing wrong, yet I was interrogated, belittled, and made to feel completely unsafe. This is not just about me. This is not just about me, it's about the message this board and administration are sending to the students and teachers. Are you telling us that if we stand up for what's right, we'll be punished? That if we express our opinions that you don't like, we'll be bullied into submission? What kind of example are you setting for us? We should be able to look at our leaders in the district and say, "Wow, I wanna be like that." But instead, we find ourselves saying, "Oh my goodness, what a horrible example of leadership." Mr. Horvath has acted like a bully. He has abused his authority not just towards me, but towards other students as well. When I was taken into a secluded conference room alone, without warning, he made it clear that, he made it clear that he had an agenda. He pressed me with inappropriate questions. And when I gave him my honest answers, when I told him that Mr. Carey is one of the best teachers in this district, he laughed and said, "That may be your truth, but it's not the, but it's not the truth." What kind of profession, what kind of profession, what kind of professional says something like that to a student? I want you all to know that I couldn't even stay at school today because of, I had, because I had an anxiety attack just thinking about what happened in the interrogation. Many of you are parents. Imagine if your child, a 16-year-old daughter, was pulled from class, taken into a closed-door meeting alone with a male administrator, and was pressured into saying things that weren't true. Imagine if your child was shaking and crying when you picked her up. How would you feel? This board needs to take action. This investigation is tainted, it is biased, and it is unfair. The district must bring an independent investigator, because Matthew Horvath has made it clear that he's not capable of conducting a fair investigation. His bias against Mr. Carey and all KBEV students is undeniable. And please, don't forget that the people in this community voted for you. They put their trust in you to protect students and to prioritize our safety and well-being. Don't allow students like me to become collateral damage in an adult power struggle. I hope you will do the right thing. Thank you.
Arya Yektaphar. Arya?
Disgusting. Pay your therapist out of salary. Criminal.
Members of the board, it's a pleasure to see you all again. But let's hope Mr. Carey is reinstated, and I don't have to make this a reoccurring appointment, because wow, it's 10 o'clock, and I was really planning on going home to some good old LSAT prep after class today. Before I speak, I would like to recognize and appreciate the motion for individual counsel. However, I would still like to raise several issues with the investigation thus far. What we witnessed in Mr. Carey's case was not an investigation, it was a coordinated inquisition led by those who had already decided the outcome. This was not due process. This was not justice. It was an egregious abuse of power that undermined the foundational principles of fairness, accountability, and integrity. Students, including my own sister, were subjected to coercive interrogations, removed from class without consent, placed in closed-door sessions, and pressured into answering questions designed not to uncover the truth, but to manufacture guilt. The investigator, who I must emphasize, was also the very person who initiated Mr. Carey's suspension, twisted their words into confessions that were never made. When my sister, like so many others, spoke of how Mr. Carey had touched so many people's lives, the response was not an acknowledgement of his impact, but an insidious attempt to distort her words. Who has he touched? What a joke, who has he touched? This is not an inquiry, it is a fantasy to entrap an innocent man. And yet, the most glaring violation of all was that the roles of the accuser, investigator, and judge had been consolidated into a single entity. In any legitimate system, these functions must remain separate to ensure impartiality. This was a fundamental principle of justice. One that prevented institutions from devolving into authoritarianism, where accusations alone were enough to destroy lives. When the person bringing the charges was the same one concluding the inquiry and rendering judgment, the outcome was predetermined. That was not an oversight, it was persecution. This institution now faces a defining moment. Will it uphold the principles of fairness and transparency, or will it allow arbitrary enforcement and institutional corruption to fester? If justice truly is the goal, then this investigation must be removed from the hands of those who have already demonstrated bias and placed in the hands of an independent and impartial review. Anything less would be a blatant miscarriage of justice. I sincerely hope that Mr. Carey's case is the first item on the independent counsel's agenda that is hired. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, board. My name is Alona Sherman, former chair of the Human Relations Commission for the City of Beverly Hills, which is where I met Mr. Carey when we initiated a bully video competition. He came on board immediately, recognizing the need, and boy, do you guys need it now. First of all, what I'm seeing here is absolutely amazing. This is like a court of law with no due process, where you've already given a felony to somebody who, as far as we know, we don't even know what he's done. I am disappointed in the board that I elected, and you, Dr. Breggy. As I see it, this board is no longer maintaining or has, is no longer maintaining control and has ceded all power and direction to Dr. Breggy. Have you guys forgotten? You, the board, are in charge and appear frightened by your superintendent. As I see it, Dr. Breggy's main effort is to take a star educator with impeccable reputation, Mr. Romeo Carey, who has been in the district for 25 years, and for personal reasons, attack him. And what does he use as attack? The mode is intimidating parents, interrogating students, issuing gag orders, issuing cease-and-desist orders, using a publicist, a paid employee, to cover for him. A paid employee who's a publicist, who we, the taxpayers, are paying $247,000 a year. No publicist gets that. You could be hiring from a public relations firm for far less. This is a true waste of our taxpayer money. What I'm asking you, I'm asking you, the board, to take control. This is why we elected you. Take control now, tonight. Don't keep going meetings and meetings and meetings. We voted for you to represent us and to protect our children. You have failed. You all get an F. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more point of interest. Taking the agenda and changing it without posting is a blatant violation of the Brown Act. You can't do that. All right? We're upset, and we want to see Mr. Carey come back. And you can do it, and you need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Tool. Is Andrea Tool here? No, I guess she left. Okay. Erin Hassan, is Erin Hassan here?
Yes.
Can I, where are you?
Right here.
Okay, thank you. You have ceded your time to Addie Hassan, I believe.
Correct. She's on Zoom.
Excuse me?
On Zoom. She's on Zoom.
Oh, she's on Zoom. Well, she's probably on Zoom, but I, okay. I'm going to call on...
Oh, she's at the waiting room.
I will, I'll come back to her, I will come back to her. I'm, I'm getting that, I'm, just, next. I'm just, I just took a little break.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry.
Addie, are you there? No, I didn't skip. Hello, Addie?
Hello?
Hi, Addie. It's Mrs. Marcus. You have six minutes. If you would like to start now, you're welcome to start, we can hear you.
All right, hi. My name's Addie, and I'm an alum, class of 2020. I know for the last several weeks, you've heard a lot about Mr. Carey and how much students love him. I'm not gonna do that, because quite frankly, I didn't know Mr. Carey. I didn't take his class, I think I met him exactly once. What I did take, however, was AP US History, and even more importantly, AP Government. Classes where I learned about my rights and the rights of other students. I, I know that by now, you've heard about the inappropriate behavior that has been displayed by this district's administrators, including but not limited to censorship, completely inappropriate and shameful interrogations, and harassment. Now, I could sit here and lecture you about the right to freedom of speech, or the right to privacy, or the right to protection from unreasonable searches and seizures, or the right to due process. I could lecture you about the substantial disruption test established in Tinkerfield, Des Moines, and how nothing that has been produced by KBEV has ever constituted substantial disruption. I could lecture you about the precedent set by V. Woodland, which established that school officials cannot suppress a student's speech just because they don't like content. And I could lecture you about Dean V. Utica, which established that school districts have no right to censor the content to student publications. I could even go on to talk about the gross abuse of the doctrine of inlookal offense that has been displayed by the school's administration, or about the various different ed codes that have been violated over the past few weeks. But thanks to the internet, you can read about all of that yourself, not why I'm here. I'm here because over the past few weeks, I have heard stories from my family about censorship, harassment, intimidation, retaliation, corruption, and various other abuses of students' rights by this district's terrible administrators. This is an embarrassment and a disgrace. The once-distinguished district that I grew up in, and shameful abuse of power, has people who are supposed to protect their students. I have been to some of the student government meetings at my school, I know some of the senators and officers, and I've read some of the resolutions that they've written. And I can say with full confidence that the vast majority of them understand their duty as representatives to serve and help their fellow students. Every single student leader that I know understands that when you're in a leadership position, your duty is above all to the people you represent. Ask that a bunch of college students in their late teens and early twenties understand their duty as leaders more than the people who are actually running school boards? That is sad. If your purpose for holding office isn't to serve the community, you have no business being here. You have ignored the concerns of the students and parents, and allowed yourselves to be misled and manipulated by administrators who do not have the best interests of the students at heart. They have told you that their actions have been to protect the students, but in reality, they have done anything but. They are not being transparent with you, and you have both the right and the responsibility to investigate what they've hidden from you and why. You have the power to stop them, but so far, you have chosen not to. Of all these security guards taking care that no one can come in and hurt the students, but so far, the only real threat has been from your own administrators. I remember going to school in this district with Mr. Kessler, my former principal, was the superintendent. He was someone who truly cared about the students, and he dedicated his life to serving them and their families. These kinds of abuses of power were unheard of, and the efforts, effects of his kindness and dedication were felt throughout the entire district. The current administration, in contrast, has only elicited feelings of fear and disgust. From what I've heard, you've been told not to talk to the parents about a fear of litigation. so many other things going on. So let me make this very clear. If this conflict turns into yet another lawsuit, it will be because of your inaction, because you didn't listen and didn't address the problem when you had the chance, because it finally became clear to the families in this community that there was no possible other way to resolve the problem. But that hasn't happened yet, and it's not too late to prevent it. You, as a board, are at a crossroad. One way leads to yet another lawsuit and a lot of bad PR for a once-proceded district. The other leads to a chance to recover some trust in the community and protect the students that you're supposed to be serving. So I suggest that you go home tonight and take some time to seriously consider what you want your legacy to be on this board. Do you want to be one of the board that considered yourselves over what will be very sharp political careers, to be fooled, misled, and manipulated by the selfish and unethical administrators who are currently running the school at the expense of the well-being of the children and families that you're supposed to serve? Or do you want to be the people who stood up to harassment and to inappropriate behavior and who prevented more harm? Do you want to be the board that sat by or the board that acted? And do you want to be the board who gets reelected or the board who is voted out of office because they neglected their duty to the community? I vote here, so do most of the people I went to school with, and so will the kids who are currently attending high school now. If you fail to protect them, you can bet that when it comes time to cast their ballots, they will make sure that you cannot hold office again anywhere in the city. And keep in mind also that the students who have been harassed are the broadcast journalism students. If anyone knows how to get the word out, they do. I am appalled by what has happened in this district and by what the administrators have managed to get away with. If you really care about the students, please show it by taking these concerns seriously, by doing some serious investigating into the corruption in your district, and by getting rid of these corrupt and unethical administrators before it costs you your political careers and this district reputation. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a parent of a freshman in high school. And, you know, observing all this so far, I'm not for what we've seen, more escalation. Honor our members, don't be a liability to this school district or the city. Could three board members push this through? Suggesting your team to take a six-second silent vote among yourself right now. Eye contact each other if you have to, and get this concern resolved under the umbrella of common sense. Six seconds, ladies and gentlemen. Your sixth sense, the common sense. Just three of you, the honor our members, to respond to the Beverly Hills residents body gathered in here right now. Show us a positive hint. We want to see a green in your faces right now to send your approval that three of you are gonna vote on this and get this concern, you know, back to up the spirit of this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Hello, board members, parents, and students. My name is Rocha Sinai and I'm a junior at Pally High. Today, I'm not here to ask you for anything, but I'm here to express my true disappointment with the Beverly Hills district and the parents of Beverly Hills. I've lived in the Palisades my entire life. I watched as my community, my town, everything I grew up with burned to the ground. When the fires forced Pally High to go virtual, it felt like we were losing even more. Sitting behind a screen disconnected from the life we once had, it was a pandemic all over again. Then Beverly Hills School District claimed that they were opening their doors to us. We believed you. We spent hours and hours in your enrollment offices, filling out forms, hopeful that we would finally be able to return to in-person learning. We are reassured time and time again that Beverly Hills High School was under-enrolled, that there was more than enough room for us, and that no matter when we applied, we would be accepted. To us, this was so, this was heartwarming, and we were so grateful for the hospitality. Thank you for the people in the administration and enrollment offices for being so kind and welcoming to us at that time. Everything was going great after that. We were in contact with our friends at Beverly High, asking them questions about the school. They were offering their support to us, and we kept getting asked by our friends, when are you coming? When do you start? Do you need any help with classes? And we would say, it's taking a little longer than we expected, and we're still waiting to hear back. And then, without warning, we received an email. Enrollment was paused. We were just told empty promises and given false hope. But while we were waiting, the Beverly Hills parents were calling us ghetto and telling each other that we didn't belong here. They had to do everything in their power to keep us out, going as far as making campaigns and spreading the news to each other. Where is the support from our people? Other neighboring cities invited us to their school, while our own Persian community, who are closest to us, were going so far out of their way to let us down. Where is your empathy? Aren't you parents and educators supposed to be a role model to your kids and show them how to be kind at times of need? I'm so proud to be raised in the Palisades community, knowing if that the tables were turned, our community would have been waiting with open arms for every single one of your kids to come and get an education. I'm not here to ask for your acceptance of this school. I'm here so that the parents of Beverly Hills know that the things that you guys have been saying about us, we have been hearing, and we do not even want to get an education in a school that kicks others when they are already down. You have lost the opportunity to teach your students how to be there for each other. The district and board has a reputation for being selfish, and it has been proven to us, we have experienced firsthand that your reputation precedes you. You have only added to the anxiety and stress of those who are already struggling with so much. I hope this board realizes how many students they have let down and learns how to be better from this. I do want to thank the students who have spoken for us and for the parents who have been supporting us, and thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you.
Okay, Nikki Motoressi, are you here, Nikki?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. You've ceded your time to Kylie Abadi, right? Okay, Kyle, you have, Kylie, you have six minutes. Thank you.
My name is Kylie Abdi and I'm a senior at Palisades High School. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my Palisades community, who has been deeply affected by the recent fires. As many of you know, a significant portion of our school and community has turned to ash. While it has been amazing to see the outpouring support of our city, the glaring exception has been Beverly Hills. Beverly Hills High School initially extended what seemed like a lifeline, offering Pally students a chance to continue our education in a social setting surrounded by friends and peers. For many of us, this was a chance to regain a sense of normalcy after such a traumatic loss. However, just as quickly as this opportunity presented itself, it was ripped away in the blink of an eye. My friends and I spent hours in enrollment centers and weeks following waiting to hear from counselors to set up classes as promised, only to find out that the parents from Beverly were actively working against us and doing everything in their power to ensure that the quote ghetto Pally kids not be allowed to attend a school with their children. Imagine how a group of kids feel when their whole community is burnt to the ground, they have no school and many left with no home, to then see petitions, parents have begun to convince other parents to agree with them and close their door in our faces. Many of you have just seen the numbers on a screen of how many homes have been lost and how many families have been displaced, but you will never understand the grief and the loss until you have been put in the position that my community is in now. We all remember the toll that isolation took on our mental health during COVID. Beverly had the opportunity to extend a hand when we needed it the most, but instead, they turned around and slammed their door in our faces. Students have resorted to driving forty minutes away all the way to Manhattan Beach to attend an in-person school, which is already over-enrolled, when Beverly, a school that any student will agrees under-enrolled, won't accept the Pally students. What this experience has taught me is that in times of need, true colors are revealed and you see who has your back. Unfortunately, Beverly has proven that they definitely don't have ours, and it's very sad to see the lack of compassion and empathy shown. Let's be clear, this is not me begging to attend the school. That ship has sailed, and we have been left with a very bad taste in our mouth. I can honestly say that I hope Beverly never gets a taste of their own medicine because it does not taste good. We do understand concerns about only accepting residents of Beverly Hills. However, in a time like this, considering this is a temporary enrollment and will only last until the end of the semester, that residency should not be a number-one priority, which has become, considering the hardship families are already facing, as is. For many of us, including myself, it is our last semester of high school before all our friends part ways for college, and it's very important to see for us to spend this time surrounded by familiar faces and participating in traditional high school activities. Beverly dangled this hope in our faces, and this board is responsible for stripping it away. I can confidently say that if roles were reversed, the Palisades community would have welcomed Beverly with open arms, no matter the circumstance, and we would make sure to do our best to make sure everyone is taken care of because it is the least we can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for their patience, speaking around and their comments. And I think that with our work, I'm going to do a next meeting in February, January fifth, which are... Thank you.